All right, it is ten o'clock. Call this meeting in order. This is a special budget valuation team meeting Tuesday, October twenty-nine, twenty-twenty-four. Looks like all members are present. Notice the meeting was properly posted on October fifteenth, twenty-twenty-four. Item number one, discussion possible action regarding minutes of October eighth. We have a motion. Motion approved.
Second?
Got a motion second to approve the minutes of October the eighth. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It's habit. Item two, discussion possible action related to any items currently on the BET watch list. Got anything on here that we want to get out of the way before we get into meeting the Let me, since we had juvenile here, on your chillers?
Yes.
How are we?
Are they chilly?
As far as been able to Band-Aid them for now, we did have to make two manual, like we went and had to pay for some of the improvements on the heater that's above the commons. But the chiller has made it through for now. The pieces that we're gonna need before the winter, as far as been able to Band-Aid, we're back down to one elevator as of last night. So that's been their focus for about the past week. So I haven't heard an update since then. But still bending.
And what about your water heaters?
They're still functioning. Still rocking that.
All right. Heat, you got hot water.
Hannah, how many elevators do you normally have?
Three.
And a half.
Yes, and one private, three public. We had a small fire four to six weeks ago in that range, and took one of our elevators down permanently. Last time, we had a second fire in a different elevator. So we're getting out there trying to rob parts off of the first fire elevator for the second fire elevator right now to get it back operational so that we don't only have one. Because then anytime if that goes down, I'm no longer ADA compliant. So they're working on that right now, these people.
Sure, it's slowing you down anyways.
You can imagine the traffic that comes in for us to be down to one elevator.
Okay, any other discussions on any of the items on the watch list? If not, we will move on down the agenda. Do we want to go in order here, or is there a particular item that we need to take ahead?
Preference by me.
If we've got two, two on here, please get back online.
Okay. Looks like items six and seven.
And eight.
And eight. Six, seven, and eight? Let's go ahead and do seven and eight. Six is something that Jason put on here. We can have that discussion after Hannah has her discussion on the items that she's prepared. That's okay with you, Jason?
Yes.
Okay. Item seven, discussion possible action regarding the allocation of OJA daily rate increase.
So I brought you a quick summary, so you don't have to turn around and y'all mind chicken scratch.
All right. Without objection, the chair will ask the clerk's office to make this document part of record. Thank you.
They're done. Oh, if you could.
My best.
Okay, so you guys know, you guys front-funded me for the years, made for the detention center, and then OJA gives you a reimbursement each month based on our contracted beds. OJA received additional funding this year specifically to raise employee salaries in all the detention centers across the state. So everyone's daily rate got increased. Our daily rate got increased from a hundred and twenty-five dollars and change to a hundred and fifty-five dollars and change effective seven-one. But they didn't grant that fully until August. So like I told you when we came a couple months ago, we wanted to see, make sure that was actually coming in, what rate that was coming in at, and to confirm that before I came to you with a request to raise salaries. At our contract at fifty beds, that's a five-hundred-and-fifty-seven-thousand-dollar annual raise in income that the counties receive it. They very specifically gave it for employee salaries across the state. Other facilities have already applied that. But I wanted to wait to bring it to you, both because of the merit that was awarded last month and to not do it twice. So you all funded a three percent merit. We're requesting to...
Two point five.
Two point five, sorry. We're requesting to award a seven percent across the board. It's that we're not asking for any additional money. It's at no additional cost to you all. We're just asking to receive the additional reimbursement that you're getting from OJA, which was given for the raises. If that went across the board, roughly we have, I did put a three percent on here, but I used the actual numbers that we were funded. So we have with forty-six thousand roughly a month, that it's a little more than that that OJA has granted, plus the fourteen thousand that we were given to give the merit. If we did apply a seven percent, we would apply it as a merit across the board. Not every position would require a raise, but most of the positions would. It would cost us roughly fifty-one thousand a month to do that. And we're between the merit and the OJA increase, we're at sixty. So there's leaving roughly nine thousand dollars a month in the general fund outside of that. Our current salary is thirty-four, sixteen, ninety-four, starting out for detention. I gave you at the bottom what other surrounding facilities are starting at. Cleveland County's starting at thirty-five, forty-nine, eighty-three. DOC's at thirty-seven, forty-three, twenty-one. And the jail trust is as high as thirty-seven, ninety-three, forty-four with a twenty-five-hundred-dollar signing bonus. So we're still not at what other agencies are, but it would keep us comparable. You guys have seen what's happening in other juvenile bureaus across the state, specifically in Tulsa County. One main reason that we're able to stay ahead is because we keep our salaries competitive. Other juvenile detention facilities have raised their rates. Now, we're a larger facility, have a lot more requirements, have a lot more serious offenders than some of the other facilities. So our salaries are higher than some of those, especially the mom-and-pop, you know, eight-to-ten-bed facilities. But if we're gonna stay competitive, I have to keep up with salaries. We are very, very thankfully not in the same position as some of the other facilities across the state. And I really need to stay competitive in order to keep the caliber of employees that I need for us to stay there.
This specifically, you just talked about detention officers.
Well, so it would cascade. So it would raise the detention officer salaries, but I can't raise the detention officer series without it affecting the bureau. So it would cascade higher.
So how many civilians do you have that would offer a credit?
All, I slotted for all positions.
Okay, that's where I was headed, because we ran into the same.
With the exception of, I mean, the highest positions wouldn't. But because it, my, so the way we've set it up, when you come in as an entry-level detention officer, you receive a step promotion at one year to help with tenure. That step promotion is equal to what an entry-level degree position is in my bureau side. So if I'm gonna raise detention side, I can't do that without it affecting the bureau side as well.
Hannah, when would you make this additional four percent?
I have not given out any merit yet. So we did not give out a merit in October payroll. I was waiting until November to see what we were going to do with this to do that. So I do it, I do it in November.
So can I do it all at once?
Not retro.
Aye, at your discretion. Obviously, we would retro the merit, the merit that you all gave. But the numbers I gave you are for the full-year cost. So I'd like to do it effective July, but if you guys would prefer I do it a different time, I'd be happy to.
Now, is OJA already paying this additional?
They are, and they've been paying you...
You said July, and then...
Yes. So since our August invoice, you've been receiving the additional now.
Were they gonna make up July, do you know? Are they retracting their increase?
It's been paid, yes. Yeah, no, it didn't come until August. That's when we did it. But yes, we've been receiving it this month and a year.
So they're all paid up to you today?
Correct.
One thing that I think we need to consider here, I mean, actually, there's two. I mean, I think Budget Board and Hannah and her staff, I think, have done a good job getting some salary increases over the last several years out there. Whereas I think OJA was probably trying to utilize this mechanism because other entities weren't doing likewise. But I think one thing that we've got to consider here is that while OJA has given this increase now for this, I mean, they say for this particular purpose, but that doesn't mean that OJA's not gonna come back next year, or the year after, or the year after, and cut the funding back to whatever arbitrary amount they want. Because they set these rates, and even when they set the rate, then we've had years in the past where they've come back and said, oh, there's been a revenue shortfall. So while we told you at the beginning of the year, we're gonna pay you X rate for X number of beds, we're actually gonna lower that rate to a smaller amount because we've had a revenue failure or whatever. But if we increase salaries, we are putting this on ourselves, this obligation of half a million dollars moving forward, even if OJA decides that they're not gonna fund us at that same level in the future. So then we have a choice at that point. Are we, where are we gonna come up with an additional half million dollars so that we stay status quo? And if we can't come up with a five-hundred thousand dollars, are we cutting salaries, are we cutting number of employees? It puts us in a tough position. So I think those are the considerations that we need to think about as we're moving forward on this.
And really, you're putting that on me. Because if, at any time, OJ, let's say, OJ comes back next year and says, we're only contracting for thirty beds. That's a difference in staffing that on me. So then I come back and say, here's where we're at, here's what OJA is saying. We can, I can do it through attrition. We can lay off. We can do, not that that's something I would ever want to do, but if OJ ever came in, like, we're in the sixties now. We did very thankfully have a brief breath of fresh air where we were in the forties for about three weeks. And we're right back up to the sixties now.
I was actually gonna ask that. So how closely does your staffing correlate to the OJA members?
I staff her an average of sixty kids.
Okay.
So now I...
Regardless of what OJA...
Regardless of what they fund me for. Because I have to be open for sixty-eight, I'm licensed for sixty-eight beds.
So what happens if OJA funds you for thirty, and your ADP is forty?
Well, they would be severely handicapped in that they could not place their kids with me. Right now, I am, I do have the largest population in the state. You guys have seen what's happening with Tulsa County. Tulsa County's down in the tens and twenties. They can't place kids there. You know the struggles with Kojak. It's a beautiful, wonderful facility, but it's out in the middle of nowhere, and they're really hard time staffing it. So they can't take this. I have kids sitting in my facility waiting on placement now.
When you say they're placing kids in your facility, and you mentioned that Tulsa County is down, are these, are these kids from other counties?
No. I have, I do not take any residential beds. But they sit in my facility waiting placement. So they have nowhere to place them, and they've closed almost all of the small facilities.
And those, they're paying a hundred percent, not eighty-five percent?
Correct. Once they go, OJ.
Now, once again, it's a hundred percent of the rate that they determine, not a hundred percent of what our actual cost is.
Correct. And it does, I would also say, they gave the raise partially for smaller facilities as well, who haven't been as diligent as you all in giving raises. They gave it also because the level of offenders we have is just higher. My murder ones are through the roof. I even have a murder one female population now that will sit with me for years. It just takes more, it takes more effort, it takes more staff, it takes more thinking outside the box, more different things. And I, if our salaries fall much further below every other jurisdiction around us, because the caliber of staff that I have to have is equitable to the jailers at Canadian County and Cleveland County and at the jail trust. I can't hire the civilian just comes in and does door checks like I could three years ago. I have to have the higher caliber officer who has the experience or who I can train to be at that level. They're just, I have murder ones, I have rape ones, I have verb ones, I have kids who have severe, severe mental health issues, and there are no other resources. There is nowhere else for them to go.
What can OJA do in the event you're not fully staffed due to salaries?
What do you mean?
Like, I mean, are they able to come in, you know, like, for example, in a jail, this, I mean, in like, when we were in the jail, there's really not as many as much teeth if we were understaffed, outside of like DOJ or something like that. But, I mean, does the OJA have the ability to come in and find you in the event you're not fully staffed?
They can pull my license. Because me not being fully staffed means the kids don't get out twelve hours a day. They, we start infringing upon the rights in the administrative code that's set by the law. So they can come in and threaten my license if we're not performing at the level.
Fully staffed to the contract now. Right.
Yes. No, but even then, they, even if we don't have a contract with them, they are who grants my license to house juveniles in the state. So they could at any time, whether I have, whether we have a contract with OJ or not to keep their kids, they still license me. So...
I get that, I get that. But if, if we're licensed in a certain amount, and they're only contracting with us at a certain amount, and this gets back to an argument that we've been making, that we're in District One specifically for years now in these conversations, and Aaron's not here. But you've been in some of those conversations and in those rooms. When I mentioned they're paying a hundred percent on those, that is, that is on their rate, but that is part and parcel. Because that happened because of the conversations that we pushed forward in Oklahoma County. They weren't even considering that. They were arguing with us that they didn't have to do it. And we made the constitutional provision for the argument that we're, once they are OJ, an OJA kid, it's similar to when a JNS has been issued on somebody at the adult facility. They are a state responsibility. They argued, they thought eventually the legislature changed the law and put it to where they had to pay a hundred percent. But then they got a little bit cute on when the hundred percent goes into effect.
Right.
Language and all this kind of stuff. But I say all that just to say that we have been in discussions for years about these types of issues. And at the end of the day, this is, it's, they're pushing very, very close to with things like this, saying, we're gonna give you extra money, but forcing you to do this, and this, and this. They're just making the argument more and more and more clear that it is a state function, and that they are just forcing this on us. So to Brandon's point, if that were the case, I think Erin, if she was sitting in here, she would say, bring it on. So...
And they've, I'll also just tell you in full transparency, they've gone on the news saying they're doing this. They've told my line staff they're doing this. They've announced it at the OJDA for all detention administrators across the state. It is very public knowledge that they have given this drastic increase for employee raises.
Are there strings attached, like, are you gonna...
Only as far as the strings we have right now. I mean, if they could, I mean, technically, we're not in contract right now. They did an extension. The extension was only authorized through the end of August, I believe. And then they elected to renew, but without actually renewing the contract. So we're getting the higher, the higher rate. But they just sent me an email and said, oh, we're gonna do the renewal. And I said, thank you, but we have to do more than that. We can't, like, I can't just take an email and say, hey, we need renewal.
They chose to renew. So it's like, well, it's renewed because we chose to renew. We're gonna send you this money, and we're gonna tell you, you have to do this with it. I mean, at what point do we get to, well, okay, so are you the employer, or are they the employer? Because you're really, really getting close to acting like you are the employer, not Oklahoma County.
And I don't know the answer of, because I know they gave it to us for raises. I don't know what the answer is if we elect not to give them. Because obviously, it's completely up to us. If I set, I set the salaries for my employees based on the funding you give me. Obviously, they don't dictate that. But I don't know what the answer is if we don't.
That would be important to know. We can't, I wouldn't make a decision without knowing that information. Is there a nose-planting clause? Can we give them the pay raise on one hand and take away money with the other? What's the penalty? What's, I mean...
I think...
I wouldn't make a decision without that information.
My concern is, from a financial standpoint, increasing the liability, I mean, because this is an ongoing thing. And Hannah, you just mentioned the changing circumstances of the folks that you were serving in your facility.
Or it's not gonna change for the liar.
No, no, no. I know, I know. But what I was gonna say was, when you mentioned earlier, if they're only in a contract for thirty, then you can adjust your personnel. But due to the changing nature, I mean, you had mentioned, now you've got, you know, female in on murder one, you got segregation issues there. You got, you may have a pod that you have to have open.
Sure.
For, that's, you know, and you have to have staffing there, whether you have that one person or whether you have, you know, multiples. So even if they did only contract at thirty, we couldn't just necessarily go down and...
No, but it would drastically change my staffing requirement. If their contract went down to thirty beds, it would drastically change the staffing that I need.
What you mentioned a minute ago was your license up at a higher amount. So even if we're only contracted at thirty, and they're piling up, there are OJA folks in there.
Well, they wouldn't be able to.
That's what I was asking you earlier, kind of. So if, if they lower the contract, can you lower your staff to accommodate?
Sure.
Okay.
Now, they'll, I can't guarantee by how much, because it depends on the type of other offenders that I have in the facility. But yes, I mean, if their contracted beds are less, it means they found space for those kids somewhere else, and I don't have to house them. So that's less staff that I have to have.
But you were just saying at the beginning that there's not a lot of space out there.
Today, right now.
Right. But how quickly can they open it up?
Which is why I don't believe we'll have a reduction in contracted beds.
That's what would surprise me.
Historically, how many times has this reduction happened, do you know?
Once by ten beds in the seven or eight years I've been...
No, we went from, we went from seventy-six to sixty-five, and then we went from sixty-five to fifty.
Fifty, a couple years ago.
Yeah.
I know that OJA members overall have gone down.
There was conversations about it going. They were saying that it was gonna go.
But that was when we had the rate renegotiation. It was, it was one of those things where they said, okay, we'll increase the rate, but we're gonna decrease the beds. It was a, it both happened at the same time.
The governor announces today the executive director.
Really?
Okay.
And it's Tim Tardy-Bird.
For OJA?
Yep.
Okay.
That could be, you know, we know Tim, and hopefully he'll be a little more open to
I mean, I don't wanna get too far ahead here, but I'm looking at this amount of money that they're gonna provide us.
They are providing.
They are providing.
Okay.
So...
Then that's just over forty-six thousand dollars a month. And on this other agenda item I've got, we're spending eleven thousand dollars a month on mental health with temporary funding. I mean, we'd like to have some discretion over how this money's spent, not a thing. I mean, if we're competitive and we're fully staffed right now...
But we won't work for long.
I know, but when is that? Is that six months from now? Is that a year from now? Is that in three weeks? Because if we're gonna put the money there now...
Well, then you're bidding against yourself, as far as I can tell.
I don't know. I can just tell you I'll fall behind the other facilities, but I'm already behind.
You mentioned Cleveland County on here. Is this the...
A starting salary for a jail.
A jail? This isn't their juvenile?
No.
Okay. You know what their juvenile is?
I don't know. I don't know if it's the same. I know on their website, it just said a detention officer, which I'm not sure if that meant an adulterer juvenile.
There's five total or seven juvenile.
There's four bureaus. So there are, and then there are tons of juvenile holding facilities.
So I think, I think, I'll go ahead.
I was gonna say, I don't know how we make any decision, but we don't know what the state's string is attached, or what the requirements are, or the penalties, anything like that.
I don't think they can penalize us. I mean, you're getting the money now. It's just like our normal contract. They just raised their daily rate. They told us that they gave it for raising.
That's my viewpoint as well, that it's the five fifty-seven, and then it's, while they say it's for this, I think we can make, my opinion, we make the determination what we're gonna do with that half a million dollars. But I do think that probably the next step that we need to do before we make these types of decisions, I think we need to get the contract negotiated.
Okay.
I know they set the rate. Are they now paying a hundred percent of the rate they set for us, or is it still eighty-five percent?
It depends on their juveniles and their adjudication status.
If they're an OJA kid, they've already been, their cases, I know I'm oversimplifying.
No, sure.
But their cases over, they're a little bit different because they can have multiple things going on at once, right? So it gets really confusing. But once they are, I like to think of it just as, it kind of in black and white, like at the jail. When they've gone through their court proceeding, they've been failed guilty or pled out, and now they are going into DOC custody, they're the state responsibility. When you have that type of line on these kids, then they move from eighty-five percent to a hundred percent. They're not part of the fifty-bed contract. They are the additional kids that are in there, and they're paying a hundred percent of the cost of that kid. But they're paying a hundred percent, they're saying, okay, we can't do, we can't handle this. We don't have enough beds to do it. Now, we know we're responsible for doing it, but we can't. So we're gonna have you do it, but we're gonna pay you to do it. And we're gonna pay you a hundred percent of the cost that it costs to do that, because we're not gonna have that expense doing it ourselves. But the problem is, they're not asking us, okay, Oklahoma County, what does it cost you to take care of this kid for us? They say, it should cost you this amount of money, so we're gonna pay you this amount of money. When we have studies from our vendor that we've had for seven or eight years now do a daily rate study for us that says that hundred percent rate is not what it costs Oklahoma County, it costs us more, they are getting a bargain by forcing us to keep the kid because they are not coming and getting them. It's kind of like over at the jail when DOC just lets them back up. That's what the situation is. So they're not paying us a hundred percent of what our actual cost is. They're paying us a hundred percent of what they say the cost should be.
Oh, I knew it wasn't.
And then...
I just didn't know if they were.
And then before that, before it gets to that point, they're paying us eighty-five percent of the arbitrary number that they have come up with. So they just increased what they think the number is, the hundred percent. They just increased it by the, how much did you say?
Thirty dollars.
The thirty dollars a day.
Thirty per day. But they are paying that regardless of how many kids are in their custody, my custody. That contracted rate is what I, is what you all get a month. That's not, that's not, because like, when I was in the forties, we're still getting fifty beds.
So the thirty-dollar increase, which comes up to the...
Per bed, per day.
What did they do on the hundred percent rate?
That's the daily rate. They've set, they've changed the daily rate from one twenty-five to one fifty-five.
So they're paying us the additional thirty dollars a day on the hundred percent kids?
Correct.
As in making sure they were doing that.
Is this money that comes from OJA, is it service fee or special revenue or neither?
No. You guys front-funded me, and this is your reimbursement from OJA.
Okay. So there's no restrictions on it at all?
Not that I'm aware of.
So if, so if we do, if we were to do nothing the entire year, we would kick five-hundred-and-fifty-seven-thousand-one-hundred-andy dollars back to the county federal fund?
I believe so.
First of this minute, somewhere else, perfect.
Which is actually interesting, because this money, this five fifty-seven, was not previously budgeted. So this is... So this is revenue that's going to go into general fund and cannot be spent this year unless we reopen the budget. So the only way to get the money associated with, with this increase, the five hundred fifty-seven thousand dollars, is to transfer money from reserve or somebody else's budget into juvenile to get through this fiscal year. Because we can't use that, that money absent reopening the budget.
Even if it's a contract?
Doesn't matter. It's unanticipated revenue.
Our ongoing operations and reserve is one million, five hundred and eighty-two thousand, ninety-nine dollars and twenty-two cents. One point five.
It's a third of it, over a third. So, I mean, I don't know where we come up with the five fifty-seven to get us through this fiscal year.
Would you be comfortable with a lesser percentage? I can't go back to my staff until the OJA gave us five hundred thousand dollars and the county's not going to give you anything. I can't do that.
The county has given raises out there over time. We, we did the rate study and everything. So there's other entities that have not done that. We've, we gave eight percent several years ago because of cost of living. We, we've done colas and increases.
Oh, I agree with you. You guys have been very generous. I just, I don't know how I'm supposed to go back to my staff and tell them when they've seen it on the news. They've seen it at their conferences. Hey, the county's getting this amount of money specifically for you, but we're electing not to give it to you. I don't know how to relay that.
Well, there's.
I mean, outside of salaries, what's the other recommendation county has been doing? So I'm not hearing any other ideas.
Well, I still don't know what the state's expectations are on how you spend this money. How you go, what they can do about it. But it sounds like we can't do it anyway.
It's the same as our other contract.
But it sounds like we can't do it anyway right now. We have several months to think about it because, unless we open up the budget again.
If, if we allocate any salary and benefit increases for, for your folks out there. And I understand the situation that the state this puts you in, I do. But the five hundred fifty-seven thousand dollars is not available for us to put into your budget. It's just not, absent us opening the budget. So we would have to front that money from somewhere else. Why I say front the money? We'd have to use that money from a different funding source for this fiscal year and then begin using the five fifty-seven next fiscal year.
For nine months though, because it's sitting there. I mean, it's not that it would be indefinite and you guys have to eat five hundred thousand dollars. We'd be front funding it for nine months and then receive.
From where? Where are we front funding?
We're getting it now.
That, that's what I'm asking. It's all in her budget, so. No, 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 no. No, it's not in her budget. She was budgeted X number of dollars.
Right.
And let's, let's say, if, if you were operating like them, what it would be is you would say, we need one, one point five million dollars in our budget for everything for this fiscal year. And on July one, we give you one point five million dollars and that's what you can use. And then if we were getting reimbursed for all your one point five million, it comes into general fund and we're using that. But if it goes, if, wherever you were getting that one point five reimbursement from, if they say, okay, we're going to give you an additional five hundred thousand, so now you have two hundred thousand, that comes into general fund, but it's not going, it's not a special revenue amount like highway cash or your special funds. It goes into general fund, just like the other reimbursements. But it wasn't budgeted at the beginning of the year on the revenue side. We, so we cannot touch that money. It just piles up. A, a great example is your, um, SCAP grant. You get that SCAP grant money becomes available towards the end of the fiscal year. I think it's usually like March or April or something like that. And what we generally do, because we're getting close to the end of the fiscal year, that SCAP grant money comes into general fund and we've had money in reserve. And we just say, okay, we're going to go ahead and move the money from reserve over to the sheriff's office so they can go ahead and spend that, whatever it is, a hundred fifty, two hundred thousand dollars. Because that money's sitting in the general fund and we'll have it available July one and it's just a couple months. But we have to do it like that because we can't take the SCAP grant money and just move it over into your account without opening the budget. It has to sit in general government and we come up with those dollars from somewhere else to front fund it to you. And then you don't get that SCAP grant money on July one because we gave it to you from somewhere else.
So it is frozen, but it's not gone. Right.
Right, but it's frozen and it's just.
Yeah.
Yeah.
To be able to fund this now, we would have to pull from our general fund reserve.
Or open, open, pull past the hat or whatever, yeah.
Unless you consider it like a one-time loan out of one-time monies. There's eight million sitting there for that.
And it would be less if we're doing nine months versus. I mean, essentially, it is a one-time money. I mean, because we are going to get reimbursed for it. And so what was the balance on that? Do you have that?
Uh, yeah.
It's like eight million.
Mm-hmm, yeah. It's on the watch list. Uh, one-time funds is sitting at seven point nine.
Is a comment from the OJA contract not to be done at this time of the year?
We've had years where we have a contract.
Haven't been paid, yeah, two point minutes.
Because of the provisions that they put in there and it's not like a negotiated contract, even though we sit in there or the county's negotiation has been, we're not going to sign the contract. And we just go with that contract because there's terms in there that are absolutely unacceptable, have been unacceptable to the county. I mean, stuff like if something happens in your facility, you can't have any communication with anybody absent direct approval from OJA.
But our current contract has been approved and signed. It's just, it hasn't been, the renewal has not been completed. We have had an agreeable contract between both parties up until August thirty-first.
We didn't have one for a long time. We were able to get a few things changed and the board went ahead and signed it last year. And then the, there was a temporary renewal that in, instead of getting through, going through all of the steps this year, OJA said, hang on a second. We're going to have additional funding in the fall and we don't know exactly what all that's going to look like. So there was a pause put on the, the contract renewals until we knew what that looked like. Now we know what that looks like and OJA, instead of saying, okay, let's negotiate the, the renewal, said, okay, yeah, we know what it is and so we're putting it in there and don't worry about it because we've said the renewal's the renewal and we don't really need your signature because we can dictate it. It's renewed.
Is there other revenue that's parked and waiting?
Do what?
Is there other revenue we received after the start of the fiscal year that wasn't budgeted that's parked and waiting?
We pick that all up with the supplement. It was part of the balance and.
Would we expect any more sometime between the, now and the end of the year that would justify opening back?
We're going to front load for nine months. Not to open.
Budget. That, if we were going to front load it for nine months, it's a little over five million. It would have to come from another fund.
No, it would just be, it would be nine months of the five hundred fifty-seven thousand.
Right.
Which is five million.
No, that, five fifty-seven is a total amount.
Five hundred fifty-seven is for a whole year.
Oh, that's close to six thousand, yeah, I'm sorry. You're right.
If the rate's going up, would it not be a renewal or be a new contract for the remainder of the year?
I think it would just be a, I don't think the rate is in the contract. I believe the contract states the daily rate because it's set by the state for all facilities. So I don't believe the contract. I think, I believe it's just an addendum to the contract that sets the rate. I think that's right for me.
We used to have the rate and the number of beds and everything in the contract because.
It's a contract for that?
When I was in law school, which wasn't like a hundred years ago, I mean, they said that there are certain terms of contracts that are absolutely needed. You got to have a price and you got to have a quantity and you have to have a description of the item. We have no price, we have no quantity, but they were like, you know, we won't put it in there. They want it on an addendum sheet instead of in the actual contract, so.
Looking for us to laws my label.
If they're just doing a renewal as it stands now, I doubt there's any new stipulations. And if we try to make this work now, what we can do in the future, like next fiscal year, if we're looking at a two point five percent from our group again, maybe take it into account that Hannah did give this four percent, see how.
Yeah, no, there, there won't be, at least my understanding is, any additional strings attached to five fifty-seven other than the, I, I don't know what level of enforcement they're going to try to say, you have to increase the salaries. I don't know what their response is to be.
I don't know. Because again, if they set the daily rate and they've given it to us for this and we don't do it, if they set it, I, I don't know what the rules are for them on giving us a different daily rate than another facility.
Well, mechanically, I mean, that money's not available to use unless we open the budget. So we do have to front fund it somewhere. I mean, that's, that's.
And I will say, just, I, I, I mean, I don't have the information in front of me, but this is saying that they have increased it to, what'd you say, Hannah, a hundred and fifty?
Yes, one fifty-five, sixty-seven is what they've been paying us per bed, per day since July one.
And I think whether, I don't know if it was last year or the year before. I think our daily rate from our study was what, two twenty-five?
I actually thought that anyone yesterday.
Okay.
Um, they haven't finished all of it, but the.
I was such a disparity with on what MGT does for the juvenile center versus the jail. But that's substantial.
There are a lot of things in that study that it's impossible to calculate. Like when you look at utilities, how you calculate how much electricity goes to detention, which is twenty-four hours versus how much goes to the, to the building, which is not open twenty-four hours. For instance, the staffing salaries, we split sixty-five percent and thirty-five percent and that was the rate indicated because at that time, sixty-five percent of my staff were in detention and thirty-five percent were in the bureau. That's obviously not the ratio now. There's a lot of, we did the best we could ratios in there for them.
And if you recall, that's why we did that split. Used to, for the newer members, juvenile used to have one, but, well, they had some special revenue accounts. But from general fund, we funded them into one general fund budget. Well, as we got into conversations on this rate issue, it was determined that we needed to split the costs because the state is reimbursing us on the detention side, not on the bureau side. So we came in and created a second budget. So they had a detention budget and a bureau budget and we split out costs to each one. That way we could help further justify the expense that we were paying on the detention side.
Based on FY twenty-two, twenty-three, the rate increased from three thirty-four eighty-eight to three seventy-three sixty-two. Based on not last fiscal year.
Yeah, so the two twenty-five was like.
Three seventy-three sixty-two?
Yes.
Kind of what we say the actual rate should be.
One more time, what is, what did you do?
It went from, it went from three thirty-four eighty-eight to three seventy-three sixty-two. And again, that's, now that's everything. It's, if I employ a janitor, it's sixty-five percent of their salary, so.
What, what's the judge set the daily rate for the jail up? Fifty-five up, something like that?
It's sixty-one dollars.
Sixty-one?
No, the, the judge gave us fifty-five. The MGT study said that the average daily is about sixty-one to forty-seven per day. An initial daily is two hundred and eleven dollars and change.
Yeah, so she got a five-fold multiplier on the cost of juvenile versus a jail.
I, I, I don't know what the difference is. It's the same company that.
Running for two hundred dollars a day.
It's MGT, so MGT does it for both.
I think it's just impossible to divide some of those.
Yeah, but anyway, the, whether it's two hundred, three hundred dollars, whatever, even with this additional five hundred fifty-seven thousand dollars, it moves their daily rate that they say it is to a hundred and fifty dollars, which is, it's under the amount of the daily rate from six years ago still, so.
Is there a number you would be comfortable with? If the fifty-one thousand a month is too hard to swallow, uh, I mean, I don't mean to stand here with my hand out, but I can't go back to them and say. Well, either way, no matter what amount.
We're not finding, yeah, I'm, I'm not too about the amount. I really, I mean, I.
And personally, I feel comfortable about the fact that since we are going to get reimbursed, that it is one-time funding. We do have some one, front funding. We, we do have some one-time funding available. I mean, I'm, I'm personally comfortable with utilizing that for this.
I'm just looking at my glitch walk with, I'll at least make a motion, may I have a lack of time? But I'll make a motion, I'll give a few percent.
Be handed from where?
What amount?
Where, from where? I don't know. Well, I mean, let me, let me talk myself through this. So if it's a nine-month amount, um, should I do a quick math here? That means we would need, oops. Four hundred seventeen, eight seventy-nine, thirty-five. So four hundred seventeen, eight seventy-nine, thirty-eight. Don't you got grant? This nine months, we need seventy-five percent of that, so four seventy-nine, four seventeen.
Eight seventy-nine.
Thirty-eight?
Yeah.
And I mean, I'd make a motion, I don't know how we word it, but a one-time, one-time loan or a loan, a one-time funds that are, that are parked in reserve, is that the appropriate way, Chris, you did?
The only thing is, it all, it has a fiscal year limitation.
Right.
It, I mean.
It's not, we couldn't do as alone.
Yeah, yeah, but it's just in our heads what we're using the money for.
You mean, just keep it square for us? Okay, yeah.
Um, tell me that amount again, four seventeen what?
Yeah, four seventeen, eight seventy-nine, thirty.
No, it says to raise salaries. Are you, is that amount inclusive of the benefits?
It is. Well, it's inclusive of the fringe tax on retirement. Health insurance won't change if I'm not asking for any of this.
Okay. I was just being clear because this salary is on here. Do what?
You mean the.
The other.
Yeah.
Um. My, my biggest concern on this, Hannah, it has nothing to do with your employees. It has everything to do with, I've been here and I've seen this when OJA says, we don't have the money, so we're going to cut the costs, we're not paying you. And that may not be this year, but that could be three years down the road. And we have set ourselves up and we're obligating ourselves to paying this amount of money. And then the state comes in and makes a decision that we have no control over and how do we fund it? I mean, we.
Well, they can do that.
Yeah, how's that different than what they could do at any time under any circumstances?
Because it's an additional half a million dollars.
Yeah, but I mean, it's, they could cut your beds, they could cut your rate.
They can do whatever.
How, how do we, how do we find a way to pay for it when they didn't pay us all? Let me figure it out.
What would we do if we weren't taking the money and they did all these?
No, they, they had to pay us. We, they just didn't pay us under contract. Just because we didn't have a contract, they weren't not paying us. We were sending them a bill. There's a mechanism in state law to bill them if you're not under contract. So we weren't providing it free of charge.
You're saying up to the contract.
But didn't we go a whole fiscal year without payment, like two point seven?
They paid us.
We settled.
Yeah.
Eventually we settled.
Yeah, that's right. And I guess they paid us, but it was sometime in the future that.
No, 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 okay. So we had front funded and we had the money in, in the county budget and general fund. The end, the, the very beginning of that next fiscal year, they paid us for the previous fiscal year. So we had it in there to pay for the next year. So it's been budgeted and it's not like we went.
Yeah, but there was a couple, there was a couple of fiscal years in a row where they didn't pay us, right?
No, well, they didn't pay us in that year, but they, they paid us at the end of the fiscal year, not through a contract, but through a different mechanism. There's never been a year where they didn't either pay us that year for those services or they didn't pay us within one or two months of the next fiscal year for the previous year's services.
Each year that we didn't have a contract, the county settled with the state.
So instead of reimbursing us on a monthly basis, they did it at the end of the year. So we were still able to cash flow without changing anything.
Yes.
So when you say settlement, is that settlement for a lower amount than what we do?
Depends on who you ask.
Was it a lower amount than we were expecting? It was based on the previous, previous contract, now, that was in place before, yeah.
I second your motion, Brandon.
I don't know if that was completed on.
Where's the money coming from?
There was general fund reserve, and if we need to somehow.
We need to, are we earmarking the one time? We need to have it, yeah, because I'm keeping those balances.
Okay.
You'll see it on the first page of the watch list, so pretty much anything, we kind of, it is a clear, you know, one-time versus ongoing.
Mm-hmm.
Now, if this passes as a recommendation, I just want you to.
Still have to.
Still has to go to budget board, and we made a recommendation that passed to budget board for employee benefits to utilize funds that were in, that were one-time funds, and budget board wanted to hold those funds for construction of the new jail. That's, that $8 million, there is, there's precedent that shows the budget board has not been inclined to fund something else because of wanting to hold that money for the new jail construction.
But they just made the decision not to put it in that.
I'm just, I'm just throwing that out there, that that has been.
But also, the fact that it just failed to.
Right.
Be sent to jail in the most recent budget.
Right.
I'm not saying it won't in the future, but.
I mean, right now, I'm gonna vote no, because I still don't know what the rules are regarding this funding. I'd like to know that first, but.
They could be established that that is unrestricted according to the lawyer.
Yeah, well, I, I don't know specifically. My assumption is that it's under the same auspices of everything else that's currently, you know, in the, in the contract. Now, it's kind of unprecedented from the time that I've been here, that they have increased the rate and said this increase is for this specific thing. So I don't know if we don't use that money for that specific thing, I don't know what their response would be. Um, I, I just don't.
I don't believe now we're operating under any constraints with the reimbursement.
I am, I'm completely supportive of increasing the rate for your employees, if I know that we're not gonna have a situation to where OJA is not gonna come back and cut funding later, and then we're left holding the bag. And I understand that your employees now, you said you can't go back with nothing in your hand, well, I'm concerned later if they, if they do that, that you have to go back and say.
But I'll, I'll never be able to tell you OJA won't cut our funding next year.
No, I.
I know that, but I mean, we don't have a contract, we don't, they could.
I, I get that, but if we increase about half a million dollars.
Sure.
Then.
Then next year, we're standing there going, okay, we don't have that half a million now, we only have 300,000. What do I do with staffing?
But if they cut back a million dollars funding down the road, then if we've increased this by 500,000, it increases, we're still paying that 500,000, it would insulate us from those types of decisions if we haven't increased our, our liability.
Sure, but it would not only be us, it would be every facility in the state they would cut that rate to. So it wouldn't just be that they said Oklahoma County, you disgraced us, and we're gonna drop you.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, is there some expectation they would do that absent of revenue failure at the state? I mean, they just come in and kind of willingly do it, or has it always been a result of the declared revenue failure at the state?
It is, they have made it clear that they set the rate. And one, if you're in the middle of a fiscal year and you're under a negotiated, negotiated contract, then they will pay you that year on that contract, but there is provisions even in that contract that, well, if we don't have enough revenue, then we can pull that back. But then that next year, they can change those rates at any time, and it wouldn't be actually pulling money back. They would just say, hey, you know, yeah, we said it was $150, but, uh, we've reevaluated and we think that daily rate is $130, not $150. So, I mean, they can change that at any time. But once a contract is negotiated, they even reserve the right to change the amount that they're gonna pay you in the middle of the fiscal year, that they would otherwise be obligated. So they got you coming and going.
Right. The statute pretty much lets them do whatever they want.
Yeah, they can change it at the beginning of the year, and it's not due to a revenue failure, it's just because they wanna change the rate. They can do that, or they can change it in the middle of the year after there's a contract. So. All right, we got a second, a motion and a second to recommend 417,000.
879.38.
879.38, transfer from general fund reserve to juvenile. Is this a split between detention and bureau?
Uh, it would be, yes. Um, I can have that language before budget, before it goes to budget board, I don't want the split, it's on top of my, sorry, I should have that breakdown.
Okay, so you'll have a split of the breakdown between bureau and detention, and the split between salary and benefits.
Between salary and benefits, yes.
That she can provide a year to present to the budget board.
Yeah, yeah. All right, there is a motion and a second.
You didn't say to.
Oh, I'm sorry, to, um, juvenile detention and.
525 and 520.
Hang on, I wanted to see what the. Okay, I didn't, I didn't, it's not specific. So to juvenile detention and juvenile bureau budgets. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'm a no.
No.
And I want to sit down and get this contract negotiated first. I think, I think that is the next step, is getting the contract negotiated and everything, and then go from there, but.
Just for clarity, did pass?
Yeah.
Okay, 62?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. Because I just wanna see what, if there are additional provisions that they're gonna try to put on. All right, item seven is done. Item eight, discussion possible action regarding safety and security update to Oklahoma County Juvenile Detention Center, which will be funded at 85% by OJA.
So now, I brought you guys a copy of what we submitted to OJA. OJA has a revolving fund, um, and they, uh, have that for safety and security updates in the facility. Um, for those of you that have seen the facility, in one of our units, we have a glass divider in the middle of the pods. Um, that isn't valuable to us, and I only have it in one unit. It means that even though I have to house the kids in the same unit, I can wreck them separately. It helps with, if I have a medical kid, like we had a kid with an open gunshot wounds that I could not, if he would continue to fight, so I couldn't wreck him with the other boys, but then that, I don't, I can't just open a unit for one kid, so, um, it provides us tons and tons of opportunities for different gang-related issues, kids that are co-defendants, where we can wreck them separately. Um, OJA fo- will fund it at 85%, and we pick up the 15%. Um, so I put on your agenda item what those specifics are. Um, they'll fund 39,000 of the 46, so it'll leave me with paying for roughly $7,000 for $50,000 worth of security updates for the facility. It would put a glass divider in the other three of my new commons pods, allowing me to wreck all of those units separately.
And so obviously, you'd have to be putting up the 46,000.
Correct.
Upfront, and that's not something that you can absorb at this point?
Uh, it's something I can do today. Hopefully, they'll get me that, they, they're telling me reimbursement will be very quick, but I don't do anything without coming to you guys with the caveat that if it doesn't, then in May, I may be in trouble.
So maybe this could be a watch list item?
It could be, absolutely. They have given us the approval for it, I don't know what the timeframe is on that, like how long they have to hold that revolving fund open, but I can find out. Um, but I wanted to bring it to you guys and say, hey, they've offered this. Um, obviously, I can absorb the 7,000, but I, I can't guarantee you that I can absorb the 46, and that reimbursement in, in this fiscal year.
Hey, you're, you can absorb it right now.
Correct.
But.
But if that chiller goes down and I have to fix it tomorrow.
Right, I mean, that's what she said.
Yeah, no, I know, but I was just gonna say, on this, so that we get this buttoned up and we know where we are, because I know they were, you were so tight last year.
We were.
On M and O. I'm in favor of us just making a recommendation to transfer that amount over now, so we're not having to worry about this later, because we got the chillers, we got the hot water heaters, we got all that kind of stuff. I, I think if we button this up and we know that it's taken care of, we're not having to chase ourselves at the end of the fiscal year. And I think this is, this is phenomenal. I, I mean, I've been up there several times, and I know this is something that you guys have wanted for years.
It's huge.
And.
And the fact that we can get it for $7,000, I just, I know I'm coming to you with my handout today, but I, I'd hate to pass up $39,000.
Is this, is this quote still good?
Yes.
Is that still?
It's recent, yes, in the last thirty days.
Okay, well, I just, I just didn't, just because it had a date of 717.
Oh, yes, yeah, no, they, they did from in the last thirty days.
Okay, okay.
So this 39,894 that OJA would cover, it's the same scenario as the pay raise money, we would not actually have access to that until next year, so we're fronting that money.
The seven grand, yeah.
Well, the whole amount.
The whole amount that will get reimbursed, less seven grand.
Mm-hmm.
And it, it's not, we can't pick it up.
Right, right.
So the laws aren't that fluid?
Yeah, no, for some reason, I was, I was thinking, I was thinking they were gonna pay 85%, and we were gonna pay the 15, but it, I, I don't know why I was thinking that. It's us pay 100%, and they reimburse us.
Correct. And if I had to choose, obviously, this is vital to our facility and we need it, but I also know that I'm asking you for a lot of money. Um, the retention of my staff and the caliber of staff I have to have, uh, is more important to me than the security update. But the security update is also vital, we have an opportunity at $39,000. So again, I, I, I'm at your discretion. Um, I bring it to you, for you guys to tell me how you'd like me to operate. I just, I, I didn't wanna pass this up and not front you at the same time.
Well, I think it's a great opportunity. I mean, I think you're right, it's definitely something that would be very beneficial to your operations. Um, I, I would be comfortable with putting it on the watch list.
I, I think on this, unless I, I was really confused, I confused myself on this, but Hannah said that she can cover the 15% as of now, but may need that 7,000 watch listed, that she needs the 39,000.
No, she can absorb it now.
I can do it now.
She can do it now.
You can do what?
The whole amount. I could give the whole amount now. I don't know what all looks like in May, if I have to fix the chiller or other things.
And she thinks she can afford the 7,000, but in the event that OJA doesn't come through, she can't afford the 39, is what she anticipated.
Correct.
Well, okay, I, I, okay, that I don't understand. I completely confused myself.
Because you, it's, we're not gonna get any OJA money until next year.
Correct.
Right.
They may send it to us, but we don't have access to it.
Correct.
Which is the same as not having.
The same.
Right.
So until the end of the fiscal year, you're gonna have to pay the whole 46,935.
Yes.
Right.
She's saying she may be able to absorb that, but may not do.
She can absorb it now.
Right, but if the.
Because there's been years where she's turned.
Have a leak, spring a leak or something, and we got another problem, if you can't, so.
Which I think that's why Brandon wants to put on the watch list, because there's been years where she's turned back in 300,000, once she's been through 46.
Well, and last year was a bad year, because.
Right, and you, and you absorbed this, and, and us come up with the money for chillers and heaters, and take them off the watch list, since we know those have to be done anyway. I don't follow. What, what do you mean by?
Well, rather than us fronting 46,935. You, Hannah, you, you absorbed that.
Correct.
But you're saying, if I absorb that, I don't know what kind of position I'm gonna be in in May. If chillers go down, or water heaters, can we just front for.
I'm asking you to absorb this for the nine months until you get the money back. That other money is just gone. Nobody else is giving you any money back.
Right.
So I'm asking you, if, if it's your decision to, you would only be absorbing this 39,000 for nine months, because then you're gonna be able to use that money July 1. Whereas that other money that's on the watch list, if I have to have it, I have to have it. You are having money coming back into you.
If they're watching, how does that affect your quote?
Uh, I don't know. It's glass, so.
Well, I think.
No.
I mean, she's, she's, she's talking about moving forward on the project.
Right.
And she's gonna fund it.
She's gonna go ahead and fund it out of what she already knows.
But she may not put an item on the watch list for the reimbursement.
Right.
Yeah.
Well, well, just if she, she, she can approve it out of her budget now, but if, yes, yes, so she comes back in April or May.
You're just talking about shoving funds.
Yeah, the chances of her needing actually for a 39,894, 75, exactly back or zero, I mean, she's not gonna need that exact amount of money.
Right.
So I think that's just a place open for the watch list.
And I would wait to move forward on this piece for the next couple of weeks, to see what we look like with this heater and chiller situation. I wouldn't make a purchase like this front funding, not knowing what that position is gonna be in the next couple of weeks.
Now, these are all items, though, that I think are truly one-time expenses that we do have in reserve that is not increasing our liability in the future. It's a one-time expense that I think we could also look at, and same with the other items that you had mentioned, the chiller and the hot water heaters.
So if you're taking your other possible needs into consideration, uh, to the point to where you might be putting this off, um, I, I don't think that this is something, you know, that you should put off, so I, I would be comfortable with funding it with the one-time funds.
Why wasn't this kind of stuff put into the capital budget for the county?
We didn't know about the revolving fund. We, we made, we didn't know OJA would approve a purchase like this.
It was the chillers and the.
It was.
Water heater.
I mean, it was put on the watch list.
But I mean, why is it not a part of the capital budget that Facilities for Stacy has? I mean, what, I don't know what you call it, but they, I mean, don't they get some money to pay the dues, the fixed billings?
Mine is kind of a hybrid, where I operate the most I can out of my budget, and then they come in on larger projects, like ARPA, they do the capital projects for ARPA, but for the most part, my capital projects are done through my.
I mean, is the elevator problem you're having, is that gonna be funded?
Those are.
By, those are by the county.
Those elevators are all gonna be a cost of, you know.
Because I know they talk about elevators all the time, but they've gotta fund those a little bit. Some elevators are in, some are out, I don't follow, but.
I, I think that, Brandy, I like what you said. I think that we've got one-time money there, we've got a security need that we, we know we should do, you've been wanting to do it for a while. You got a grant that's gonna bring the money right back, 85% of it. I think if we front fund it now, then it takes guessing off of your point, off of your part, it gives you some flexibility. The problem is, these little things, if we can take care of them now, it's not gonna pile up at the end of the fiscal year, and then it's like, oh my goodness, what are we gonna do? We got all of this stuff. If she's already expending the money, we know that it's gonna be a situation where we're gonna have to get probably some money over there, and if, if by some happenstance, she's able to have money in her M and O to the tune of 39,894, and you didn't need us to fund this, there's other security and detention center things that you could purchase with that $39,000 that needs to be addressed, because there's lots of stuff out there that need to be addressed, so.
So you're asking for 39?
Correct. Because I, I can't tell you.
I'm just gonna be fronting that from one-time raises. Wait a minute, she's asking for 39.
She's gonna eat the seven.
She's gonna eat the seven in her current position.
Well, I'd be willing to make the motion to fund this project for 39,894.75, um, out of our, um, earmark this one-time funds out of our general fund.
Sorry.
I'll second.
Do a question.
But I'm, but I'm still not, I'll hold mine back, that's exactly what I was talking about.
So, Jason, the total, the total cost of the project is 47.
No, I know, no.
We're down to a penny.
What I'm, what I'm revisiting real quick before I vote is, what's the security benefit here, again?
To be able to wreck each unit separately. So like, right now, in a nine-bed unit, they're all out together, sitting at the same table. To be able to wreck each unit separately. So like right now, in a nine-bed unit, they're all out together sitting at the same table. Whereas if I have that divider, it's a secured divider where I can wreck them. We have a TV in one section. We have a game in another section. They can do, um, group over here, watch a movie over here. It gives me double the options to wreck them separately without a gang-related incident, which are through the riff right now. If I have a medical kid that needs to be out separately, it gives me more options for good girls, but I only have one girl unit.
And the way your staff and the way your schedules work, you have to wreck them all at the same time.
Correct. Well, and it wouldn't change my requirement for staffing to the class. So I could have the same officer in there watching both sets of kids, cause we're still within our one-to-seven ratio. But the kids don't, aren't able to walk up and, you know, Mike Tyson and other kids.
And yet technically, maybe she could change things up and wreck them at several times. But from an efficiency standpoint.
And the law prevents me. They have to be out twelve hours a day. So even if I do, even in odds and bring you out for an hour and then you out for an hour, I, I don't have enough time to get all the kids out for twelve hours a day.
So we've got a motion in second to recommend a budget board, a transfer from general fund reserve to juvenile detention and a mail out to succeed $39,894.75 to fund, uh, the, this security project.
I have security minors, that works.
All right, any further discussion? If not, all those in, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it. I'm sorry for confusing everybody in the beginning. I was still, I was.
Sorry.
No, I was still thinking about the previous item when you were discussing this in the beginning.
Number six.
Yep.
Number six.
Presentation by Oklahoma County Juvenile Bureau regarding its three-year mental health program, detention center, supported solely by temporary ARPA funding.
Uh, correct. So we, um, Mistree and Jason came out, um, and did a tour of the facility. And while they were out, asked about our turnkey program. And so we were telling them about it and the success of it and how it's just really, really assisted our ability to deal with behavior. Um, so in the past six months, turnkey has seen over one hundred of my kids, and that's just my end custody kids. Um, they do everything from individual counseling. They do, um, specifically, so we, all of our kids, based on when they come in, based on their MACI scores, which is a national standard test that we give to gauge their tendency for suicidal ideology, their tendency for severe aggression, their tendency for severe depression, things like that. Um, they see them based on those scores. Um, and we, and so they see, an LBC sees at least six residents every day, Monday through Thursday, to help them with the individual counseling and that piece. An LADC sees at least five residents, two to three times a week to talk about medication evaluations, how they're doing, if they're sleeping, working with our medical team. Uh, we have a psych nurse who sees five to six residents every Friday specifically for meds, which has been one of the biggest pieces for us, um, to have an onsite person who does medication evaluations, gets them back on their meds, is able to work with our facility physician to prescribe those medications. Is, we are the only facilities in the state who have that onsite right now. Um, it has become absolutely invaluable for us as far as behavior. Um, some of our kids come in detoxing off of god knows what. They come in and they've been off of their mood stabilizing meds for six months. Um, if we're not able to have a program like turnkey. And I also would tell you, we're learning just as much as anything else through this process, through the ARPA grant, what's working, what's not working. We've made tons of modifications since then of like, hey, we really don't need eight hours here. We really need six hours here. We, you know, and kind of making those adjustments to what works. Um, and so long-term, I know the medication evaluation is something that we would have to have. Um, the individual counseling has also been huge as far as behavior management goes. Um, and then as far as the LPC, that would be something that we look at in the future, whether we would continue that piece, whether it would be something that might be more complemented by a different type of, you know, physician to come in. Um, but it has absolutely changed the way we're able to relate to the kids. If we didn't have a program like this, we're required to, we have to contact the kids' worker, who may be one of my staff, maybe OJ, maybe DHS. They have to get with the parent to get the prescription from the doctor filled in a certain way, in a blister pack. The parent has to bring the medication up to us for us to administer. You can imagine what that process looks like. And I'll just be dead honest with you. What happens is the parents or the worker or whoever fails to do that, and our kids go without medications. And so then they're in the facility without the mood stabilizing medications that they need.
How, how much is this currently to program it?
Uh, do you know?
They said it was eleven thousand dollars a month.
Yes, that's what we're paying on invoice.
Okay, so it's currently being funded out of ARPA?
Correct.
So what was the, when the OCC approved that, what was the provision going forward when I ran out?
It's, it's, so the thought process on this was Hannah had brought a need forward that we weren't currently doing completely, or we were doing some of it, but it wasn't as efficient. Um, we didn't have the, the full-time funding available for it. So the thought process was it was an ARPA-eligible expense, so let's start a program, figure out what works, what doesn't work, make those modifications. So that as we get closer to the end of twenty-six, when we don't have the ability to fund it through ARPA, we can either know at the county level what we need and what that funding's gonna look like. But as important, or maybe even more important, is there's other grants out there that are available. And having some real data to be able to support an application to continue these types of services, to show what we were doing before and what we're doing now, and how much of a benefit we've received. It makes us even more, um, it'll, it allows us to score higher on, uh, grant applications from other entities in the future. So it was kind of a, a pilot program, if you will, to be able to figure out what works, what doesn't work. And so we can kind of have a, a better program.
Cause starting it, we didn't know what we didn't know. Starting it, we were very, we were way more focused on an actual psychologist coming in, sitting down with a certain number of kids a week. And we found that the individual counseling piece, like from a, a lower certified physician like an LPC, has been a lot more effective for us. We still have the kids that need the severe psychological services, but the LPC has been, were able to reach more kids and it seems to be more effective, at least for my population right now. The other piece that's really dangerous for me to give you any specifics on is, I can tell you today what my population is like. We all know that by the end of twenty-twenty-six, I could have a whole different group of kids. So, um, it's really fluid. It's something that, and turnkey has been phenomenal at working with us on like, hey, this piece is working here, let's switch this, this piece is working here, tell us what you need. Like, they've been over backwards for us, helping us kind of modify and just learn what we don't know. Cause we walked into it saying we have nothing to provide. We need to be providing something. Um, and it's really taken off. And I, I cannot tell you how much the medication evaluations and getting the kids back on the meds without waiting on a parent who doesn't have a car and doesn't have money for a prescription and can't get a doctor to see the kid to, and then so then our kids are sitting waiting on a new doctor referral, which I'm sure you all have had to sit on the waiting list for god knows how long in your own lives to be able to do that. It's just been revolutionary in our behavior management to be able to do.
So since it is ARPA funded, my question is, what's, another question's gonna be, so it's funded for the next twenty-six months?
Correct. It's funded through the end of twenty-six.
December twenty-six, okay.
And the kids are not eligible for Medicaid?
They are, a lot of them. Um, it depends on each provider, how they bill that, if they bill that.
I think that's been an issue for you though, finding providers that are willing to bill.
Correct. Like right now, I'm having to pay for, on our community side, our court ser, our court services psychological evaluations. We had a provider who bills Medicaid. Um, all of a sudden, that provider was no longer willing to continue. Um, and so now we reached out to, I can't tell you how many providers trying to find another one. I'm having to pay out of pocket $750 a piece for psych evals, because I cannot find one who will bill Medicaid or Sooner Care. Because again, they can, it, it's really not worth their time to go through, to be honest with you, the red tape of Medicare or Sooner Care. Um, and they can get it, COVID brought a lot of new things to us. And one thing that it did in the mental health services, and I'm sure other providers can tell you this, is, is it opened up a wide variety for practitioners to be able to do things remotely. And so if they can work on a cash base or a sliding scale fee, they'll elect to do that most times over having to bill Medicaid or Sooner Care. My kids cannot pay for that. And so we're, we're even experiencing that in our drug testing. In our, I mean, all of our mental health or substance abuse providers across, we're experiencing a red tape pushback when it comes to that.
So this service, this, you turnkey.
Correct.
That is separate from the turnkey contract or piece that we have with the jails?
Correct. It's a completely separate contract.
Is there any concern that there may be a change in that based upon some of those changes?
No, we, we met with them two weeks ago roughly. Um, we're over the moon with them. I, they, we've had a great relationship with them, so I don't have any concerns. And they've expressed to me they have absolutely no concerns continuing.
Is there any action that you need us to take on the side of?
No, I just wanted to provide you with an update. Um, I didn't wanna wait until twenty-six. And I know Jason shared the same concerns for me to wait until twenty-six and go, hey, this is still really vital. I still really need this. But you guys not know that this is something I'd wanna continue.
We were, when Marissa and I went and visited, we were just surprised to hear about it. It's first we'd heard of it. I knew it went through OCC. I didn't know what it's now. The non-VOCC members of BET or the budget board had heard about it, so we wanted to put it on here. We wanted it on here for a couple of different reasons. One is, I've seen that, we both have seen this at the state where people would do a grant program and then come back to the legislature later and say, well, if you don't fund this, you're killing the program. And it was a grant, we never had anything to do with it, didn't even necessarily know about it. We don't wanna get into a spot like that here. And two, this is, I don't know about the current program, but the need is very real for the mental health services and to get them on their meds. I mean, you can't, I, I, I don't, I was stunned that it had not been happening. And that it took an ARPA grant, which is a temporary thing, to stand something up like that. So I think we're interested in taking this twenty-six months to figure out how to create an ongoing program. And then what does the program look like? And it, it, that's the benefit of doing something like this. You can see, one, does it make sense? I think the answer's gonna be yes. Two, what's the best way to do it? With a contractor or to do it in-house and to hire them, with people who become employees? And then where does the funding come from? Uh, and then how do you collect the data and what data are you collecting that would help satisfy other grant entities and the county and whoever we need to share that data with? So I, I wanted, I wanted us just to have this as something we're kind of keeping track of.
So we're fully funded through December twenty-six through ARPA? So it's that point moving forward. So maybe do we need to keep this in the thought as we look at how item number three may be impacting our general fund? If there's some action that comes out of one of those that there would be. Well, and that new source or additional general fund revenue that would take that cost up at that point?
Sure.
Well, and I'm glad I left it off my list, but we're talking about mental health on the adult side. There's, I think you could have, well, you can't co-locate them. You can have other economies of scale with some of the providers maybe. And asking for the revenue stream to include that would be helpful.
I had planned on putting in on my estimated needs for that twenty-six, twenty-seven fiscal year. And then if I knew, even if we waited until September supplement, I believe our current contract goes through November. Um, so even if it was until that point, I would have enough time if I already had the plan in place to, to be able to execute.
I think it's wise that we look at that moving forward so that, that we address these other needs that maybe those eliminate or help with those programs. But that we pick those up and continue them, cause I think that they are resourceful and beneficial to everyone. Well, and I think in the next year or so, as we get closer to that, Hannah and her team will be looking for other grant opportunities as well, as well as getting with our grants office and trying to find, um, other monies that may be able to step into this role. Or maybe even between now and then, uh, there may be, you may see a need to expand, you know, what we're currently doing and maybe able to go get additional funding to help, you know, supplement what we're already doing between now and the end of twenty-six. Cause as it relates to item three, um, the, the more we can do to help those kids and make sure that they have the medication and the services and stuff that they need, I can only make a guesstimation that the more we do on that side, it's going to help us on the adult detention side as well. So that way, that population doesn't wind up over on the adult side eventually.
It's also helped us with the transition, because a lot of times our kids go from in the facility to their home, in a facility to a placement, or a facility to somewhere else. And we've seen prior to turnkey, they're good while we have them, because we're able to reach them and, you know, even without meds sometimes, get them to be okay. The second they go somewhere else, then they don't have those resources and they, and they just plummet. And then the whole point of them being with us, we, you know, empower them, encourage them. And we hope that every kid that leaves our doors is better than when they came in. Then they go to a group home, they go to placement, they go back home to their mom's house and fall right back off the wagon. Whereas now, if we're able to prescribe that medication, they go with their meds. And we can at least ensure that they're able to maintain for the amount of time that their mental loss them.
I know that OJA operates a, this is, this is off the agenda a little bit, but so put me in jail. But, um, OJ has a charter school, a virtual charter school. You guys have access to that? I can't remember.
So we're actually a charter school for Oklahoma City public schools.
Okay.
So Oklahoma City, and Oklahoma City bends over backwards to help us, but they'll even provide school packets if we have a kid that can't go to, to school. They, they've done great with us, so we have a need and additional resources there.
Do you school Todd, do you?
Yes, I do.
All right, anything else on item six?
Thank you.
Thanks for your.
Thank you.
All right. All righty, it looks like, um, item four, we'll do three after four. Uh, discussion, study, partnering with criminal justice authority and make possible recommendations to budget board regarding CJ's efforts to implement and assume full operational responsibility for providing medical services to detainees. Thanks, Chris. Uh, the chair will ask the court to make this document a part of the record without objection. Chris, welcome.
Thank you. Thanks for having me. Um, just to give you all a quick update on where we are, this is just a quick snapshot, um, where we are currently with the vendors and our salaries and benefits. Um, our, our contract with turnkey was of eight million dollars. So right now, we're showing a little bit of the savings. Um, of course it, we switched over on October the tenth was our first day in the facility. We have all, we kept almost all of turnkey employees that we had onsite. They have all been onboarded. So they are all now on the county payroll. Uh, currently, we are working on two RFPs. One for mental health services and one for just the regular medical services. We're hoping to have those done by next week. And as soon as we do, we'll be getting those out to different vendors to see how much it's gonna cost to have somebody else come in and take over the medical, uh, portion of the facility.
But that's, isn't that why you hired everybody?
Well, we had no choice. There was no vendor we could get that was going to come onsite and sign, sign a contract with us. We would've lost all of our medical. We would've lost all of our medical staff over a month.
So are you looking for a new vendor that will assume these employees?
Well, we, that would be part of the negotiation with them. But we want to see exactly how much it's going to cost first. We already talked to John Guderson about using county pharmacy. We didn't, Turnkey didn't give us all the information historically, so we're having to kind of go back and build some of it. As soon as I can get him a 30-day count of our meds that we use, I'm going to send those to him. And so to the point on using contracts, we're looking as best we can to use county resources for, for anything that we can.
So this, Chris, this salary cost does not include any mental health professionals, is that right? Or it does?
It does. It would, yes. Because that's, and we're not, how many do we have? 55?
54.
55.
So what were you saying about the contract?
That would be, it would be included in that salary expense, yes.
Does this contemplate any offsite care?
We already have a vendor for offsite medical, Hair and Hand Solutions. So there was nothing changed on our offsite medical portion of it.
And you do have med mal insurance now through the veterinary company?
Well, we're still working on it. It's hard to get it for a facility like ours. And not only that, some of the information, like a 10-year loss, we don't have access to. I can't get, we can't get it from Turnkey. So that's part of the issue. We're kind of going back and trying to fill in the information that we can for the insurance company. I did talk to A D A Nagy and he suggested that for our, for the doctor and the A P R Ns who are all prescribers, that possibly they get their own med mal insurance and we just cover the cost of their premiums.
So you're, you're in effect self-insured now on that?
Yes. So we can, it's very difficult to find vendors in this area.
Is that going to be your biggest hurdle, you think? No.
No, I don't think so. And I brought Donna. She's our H S A. So if anybody has any questions more on the medical technical side, she can answer those.
So on the malpractice, it's got annual cost $100,000, says the veterinary company. Is that just a guesstimation as to what?
Yes, that was approximately four med mal licenses for three A P R Ns and an N D at $25,000 per.
So that's the cost. You just don't know if you're going to actually be able to be underwritten for it?
From a, from a facility standpoint, yes. Now, I, we, that's why Rod suggested, suggested maybe we look at them doing it individually and we just cover the premiums because it is so difficult to get anything from, from the bigger company.
But you just included all that here so we can see how it matches up to the $8,000 contract you had with Turnkey, right?
Yes, sir.
Can you, Chris, can you remind me what the, and I know that, I know that you were budgeted for $8 million, but what was the actual Turnkey contract that they had submitted for F Y 25? Because it wasn't like seven and a half or 7.4 or something like that?
It's 7.75.
Yeah, it was, it was going to be a little bit more. No, it wasn't. I mean, look, I think I forgot that. It was a little bit less, but it wasn't a lot. I mean, it was like instead of 8 million, it was like 7.8 or right around that. I'll find it and get it to.
Well, I'm just going to say that that's for the base, that's for the base contract. But then they also had, they had offsite, probably had no yet, and change tracks.
That was part of, that part of the contract was $120,000 a month for offsite medical.
Okay.
But we had to hire another offsite medical company because we weren't able to get our resident seen because there were so many bills. What would happen is we would send a resident out. Something, even if, even if it might have happened in the jail, they send them out. If they, if they could say that that was a pre-existing condition, then they didn't pay.
Okay. So the total budget that you were given for medical was eight? Or there, because for some reason I don't recollect, there was two line items. There was an offsite line item and then a base line item. Does, do you may remember that? I'm just trying to make sure you got the money, to be honest.
There's, we both, even back whenever we were funding, you know, the sheriff's office to do it, there was, back when Armour was doing it and then Turnkey, there was, there was a, there was a contract amount for the base medical and then it was a contract for the offsite.
Offsite and pharmacy.
And it was usually around one and a half million for offsite.
Yeah. Okay. So all in Turnkey, no one attended there. So all in, I mean, all in cost, you anticipate right now $7.5 million a year to run it in-house? That's all inclusive?
That's, yes. I mean, we don't know, if something pops up that we just didn't, weren't prepared for. But other than that, I mean, and Donna's been doing this for years, so we really think we have all of these bases covered. And I can tell you the level of care is going up.
What are the things on this list that aren't a concrete number like the malpractice?
Yeah, that's not, that's not a concrete number.
What else on here?
Are there any others?
Oh, no, the rest of those are all contracts that we already have, that we already have.
Plus the two R F Ps that you have out right now, you mentioned.
Well, they're not finished yet. We're hoping to have them finished by next week and then we'll be sending those out.
And what are they again? Are they on here?
No, the R F Ps.
So the R F Ps, if you went that direction based upon, when you received them back, the mental and medical R F Ps, if you went that direction, that would replace all of this, right? So if they don't go with the R F Ps, this is what the cost I guess that they're looking at.
Yeah, we just want to make sure that we're providing the best levels here as best we can for, I don't want to say cheaply, but, you know, at a reasonable cost to the county.
Sorry, I'm slow. And the good news is I don't mind sharing it.
So what's the, so this is for medical, for taking over medical, what Turnkey was doing. What's food on here for, for special like?
Special diets.
Yeah, like diabetic.
If you're diabetic, well, yeah.
So that's funded through the medical and not through the food contract?
All the other detention officers get, I mean, I'll provide it.
No, I think that was specifically for the special diet.
Yeah, like, but like back when we had our contract, it was for special diets. It was for things like?
Foods.
Right, exactly. Insurance.
You didn't have that through the base, Armour contract?
Or not Armour, but the base.
Armour.
No, it was like insurance, P D line, do that sort of stuff. Diagnosed type supplements, determined by medical standards. I don't think you want P D like.
Chris, the pharmaceutical line, that's $35,000 a month. If you say you switch to the county pharmacy, would that alleviate some of that?
Probably. That's what we're hoping is that going through the county, we can cut some costs on those meds.
The problem with that is, talking to John, is that?
The blister packs and stuff.
Well, the blister packs, you got to have to save a ton of money.
Right, and we talked about.
That you don't get the heavy psychotropic meds through the county pharmacy. So, and which is a lot of what they need to provide.
I believe those blister pack machines are how much?
Well, idealistically, right now, for a lot of our medications, we dispense from bulk. So a thousand tablet container, which another pharmacy can provide us easily.
I can do the cereal and?
Some of the special meds then would be, need to be packaged individually to the specific patients. We don't do that many, and we are looking at packaging machines and stuff to reduce.
Because we do have quite.
Because you went to, there was, you got, somebody went to a conference to look at that stuff, right? The machines, the blister pack machines.
I'm familiar with those machines.
Yeah, so.
So I think we're just going to have to look at what meds we can provide, what we can't provide. What, do we have the staffing? If not, what's that going to cost? And I think John's running those traps.
Kind of a weird question. I mean, probably John, maybe for you, but do you know if the standards have changed at all? Like K O P meds, like, what, whatever, you may just keep them.
I'm not doing K O Ps or stuff like that.
Yeah, I, I don't know. Because they do it all over the country, so I've stood in that a while.
Okay, so I've been doing this for, I don't know, almost 40 years, right? And I've done inspections and consulting and worked with the National Commission. I think I know the rules pretty well.
Sure.
The meds that can come in can be tampered with.
Right, sure.
I don't want that problem because I want to give them good quality meds.
Yeah, sure.
The only thing that we really currently take over at the counter now is H R V.
It's very difficult to.
I don't want to jeopardize somebody's funding and all that stuff when they get out. I want to make sure that they.
Because I was an A C officer, still am actually. It's all around the country. It's weird how some places do it, some places don't. Some county jails, a lot of prisons, of course, but just because it's a different clientele. Yeah, I'm just curious. Yeah. I know we've been, I know, I know, I know we've never reached some level around the jail, so. Have you guys done a lot of the hip seek here?
I don't have a lot of brand facilities for that. I know it's available. But as I know that that presents, all other therapies have to fail before that's given.
Chris, is this how you're operating since October 10th? Is this just interim and we want to find a provider? Or are we getting R F Ps and might consider keeping it in-house?
Yes, the second. We, that's what we're trying, I mean, a facility our size, you know, in Texas, I got a copy of an R F P that, I can't remember the company, but it was about $1.5 million is what the cost was. So that's the reason with somebody like Donna who has so much knowledge. We think that, you know, I think that we could be able to do it in-house possibly and save money.
Well, it's good to have those R F Ps so you can have side-by-side comparisons.
Exactly.
So if, if you guys stay in-house and it's $400,000, $500,000 cheaper, then what you were paying before, what are you guys planning on doing with that offset?
Hiring more detention officers.
Me stunned if it comes in under though.
No, 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 they're under here. If they stay providing the services themselves, then it's a $400,000, $500,000, $480,000 difference that.
But I think right now, we don't know what med mal is going to be, even if they can get it. So I think that's, even we don't know that amount, but if we're self-insuring, we just got to buckle up and get ready because it's kind of.
Well, that's, that's my concern, is we're just looking at these hard costs here. And, and I thought what you were saying was the, the med mal was a known number. You just didn't know if you were going to be able to get it underwritten. Is that dollar amount?
That's, from talking to the veterinary company, yes. I mean, those premiums are going to, are going to be around that. Depending on which, which company under.
We just don't know if we're going to be able to.
Yes.
But, so these are the hard costs and let's just assume, you know, that, that we're here. We have other costs that are potential from a litigation standpoint that if we go this route, there's a different standard that a medical provider is going to be held to than a non-medical provider. And that's why I asked on the $400,000, $500,000 savings, what we're dealing with it. In my mind, we take that and we hold that into some type of auxiliary account for instances where we may have litigation expenses and whatnot, so.
Oh, okay. I should have let you finish. That's what I was thinking. That's what worries me. And the reason we really wanted this on the agenda was to track along with what you're doing to see what the county's exposure is.
Well, I mean, with Turnkey, they're an LLC anyway, so their exposure is limited. I mean, and talk to A D A Nagy, is it, you know, the biggest problem you went into with any of these like that? Even with the med mal insurance is that if it's a $14 million lawsuit, like what was that? What happened in Tulsa County, they might cover two of it. The county's still on, up for 12 of them. So the question becomes, do the premiums you pay on a year-to-date is does it play to, to, you know, giving you enough coverage that it makes it worth, makes it worth it?
Yeah, and there's, I'm not sure.
Apparently we don't have it down. Just so the group knows, I pulled back at the budget. So the budget for F Y 23, 24, since we just pretty much went flat, there was $8 million contemplated for the base and $816,000 contemplated for the care cap. So there's about $8.8 million in their budget for medical specifically, all of it.
That's right. There was actually three. There was the base, there was the cap, and then there was the offsite.
Yeah. With the cap, the cap against pharmacy and offsite.
Yeah, offsite, yeah.
So just, just so we know what kind of was with it.
You said 8.8?
Basically, yes. So it's $7,997,712 and then $816,000. And there was actually a request for increase up to 8.2 and 888, but of course, neither of those happened. So if there's a, if it does come in at 7.5?
Well, I think he said that the, the offsite piece, their contract is separately, it's not included in this number. And that, that was included in that number that you gave, right?
Well, I don't know. When did you obtain that?
We've been.
It's been a while, I heard so.
I don't remember. It was back in January?
Yeah.
What is that dollar amount? Is it that 800?
No, I'll, I'll get, I don't know it off the top of my head. I haven't looked at it in a couple of days. So let me, let me get that and I'll forward it over to you.
Yeah, I'm making sure. I just want to make sure that there's enough money not to overload exactly whatever cost.
Yeah, I'll get that number.
Yeah, I think if, if you guys are doing this in-house, I think we've got to consider the, the shift in what liability there is from a litigation standpoint. Because it's not just the difference between malpractice insurance and not malpractice insurance. It's also a, there's a different standard that's looked at and it's, it opens us up a lot more.
Do we know what the, so it says the item was requested by the budget board. Do we know what the intent of their request was? I kind of go back to that a lot, but I just want to make sure we address what their request was in this conversation. I don't, I don't, I mean, it's not directly, directly clear to know what they were asking for when I watched the agenda. When I watched the meeting.
Discuss to be partnering and make possible recommendations. I would say there's just not much to recommend to our piece.
I think the concern was, because I think it originated out of our office.
Just to.
Originally was to just make sure we know what the county's financial legal exposure is during the transition. And is there anything that the county can do to assist in not getting a joint employer situation? But the county pharmacy is a good example. Is, are there resources that we have that we could make available? And then, but again, I know we can't associate, figure out dollar amounts. I mean, who, who would be the appropriate person to try to determine that, that liability and where it falls? Again, that, I don't think that's immediately clear to me either. Who would know that answer?
I don't think it would be our committee that.
You don't know, you don't think it would be what?
It wouldn't be our committee. We don't have it.
Why wouldn't it be us?
What information do we have?
Well, it's not what we have, it's what we can get, I would think. I mean, it's, I mean, I think the DA's office would have a lot of information about it, but does the budget board just call the D A in or who do they call in? I think it's those kind of recommendations we'll have to look at.
Gotcha. We could do that.
In your, you know, is there a scenario where like someone just ran on their own and been able to acquire malpractice?
Bring it down.
Okay. That, that was another further question.
But because drugs are smaller and stronger, you wouldn't have a pretty cap on those.
Yeah, because I know, I know historically, I've had a lot of jails where they've done, they're on Thursday, they're on medical, they're on, you know, all that stuff. So somehow they've been asked to know how that would.
I'll reach out.
I think, yeah.
See.
Yeah, that's just curious.
Yeah. Hopefully, the new information I can find and the new information you all have, I'll be happy to track it down.
Any further discussion?
Is there anything we need to follow up on? I mean, I guess we're.
I can keep you guys, I can keep this updated and, you know, just shoot it out to you once a week, just to let you know where we are on a vegetarian standpoint.
I mean, is there anything that you all are concerned with, um, you know, based on what your budget is versus what, what, what they, what the outcome looks like at year end? I mean, is there anything that, you know, there's not an additional ask, there's not a, okay.
Chris, I don't think it weekly is necessary, just a regular meeting.
Okay, yeah, just whatever. Whatever you guys need, I'd be happy to invite it, so.
Chris, on the RFPs when they come in?
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chris. All right, no action needed on item. Are we on four?
No, it seems like we're on thirty.
Yeah.
All right, um, item five, let's go ahead and go to five. Discussion possible action regarding a recommendation related to the transition of the duties, responsibilities, and personnel of court services to team, DA's office, and to the detention center. Uh, discussion may include, and unlimited to, any changes related to MOUs, contracts, budgets, funding, personnel duties, policies, and procedures. This document was not attached, was it?
Yes, it was not. I just received it.
Okay, without objection, the chair will ask the clerk to make this document part of the record. Good morning, Chris, how are you?
Good morning, I'm well, I'm good.
Good.
Um, Mr. Chair, if I, if I could, the, the document that I have in front of you, uh, I want to, we want to be just as transparent as humanly possible. This is our internal document. It's actually got names of our staffs and personnel stuff on it. But I would want you to have it just as we're talking so that you can see exactly where we're at, where we're spending the money, where we may be over, where we may be under, so on and so forth. We just want to show as much as possible of this process as possible. Uh, I would also just say by, by way of setting the stage, if I could very quickly, uh, we are on pace, uh, to, we're, we're right where we need to be in spending fifty percent of our budget by the end of the year, which is what we've been allotted. But I hope that we can, uh, secure funding of the original amount for the other six months of the year. Uh, we, we are on pace to spend, uh, exactly fifty percent, a hundred percent of what has been allotted, which is fifty percent of the original contract by, uh, the end of, of this fiscal year. Not fiscal, but fiscal year. And now also we just give you an idea just for what it's worth. Uh, we are currently supervising eight hundred forty-three individuals in pretrial services today actively, actively supervising. Uh, I, I would think you would might also want to know that we are actively supervising eighty-four on an ankle monitor. Um, so you, that's, um, that's part of this contract and so on and so forth. I would just note, uh, some, some differences. We're not asking for more money, but, but I will tell you, we are over budget in what we're appropriating on ankle monitoring supervision and related software. Just because the powers that be, the, the DA's and the judges are saying, hey, this person can be out, but only with the ankle monitoring supervision. Um, and so we are going to blow the, the budget allotment for ankle monitoring out of the water. But we're going to make up for that with your, again, direction and recommendation is we, we have one vacancy uh, for the service intake specialist that we have in field. So if we take the, the salary allotment plus the benefits for that salary and pair that with the allotment for, for what we have been given, or what we have budgeted for ankle monitoring, uh, we'll have enough to make it through the end of the year if we don't fill that position. We check in with our staff daily. Uh, we collect the, the, the workload as rock where it should be for the current staffing that we have in that regard. So it's, it should not be an issue to not, to not fill that, that vacant intake specialist.
I know we had talked at one point, I think Randy was the one that was talking about. Ideally, we need to review all three parts of this thing. Not just team, but, but with the DA and with the detention center. And I'm assuming I didn't miss any of that. But we still need to do that.
Well, this agenda item was open to those discussions, including the district attorney's office and the detention center, as well as team.
I just know it seemed like kind of the well of the group was to not just hang this thing on team. So.
I think.
Close up into the year.
I think, well, and that's it. I think the sense of urgency here is, you know, as it stands now, from my understanding, the MOU with the DA's office is funded for this fiscal year as well as the one with the detention center. But teams is not. It expires at the end of December.
What is it that the attorney, does DA's office and the detention center do again? Specifically related to the program, as you may know?
Chris.
Yes, sir. Oh, go ahead. I'm sorry, I, I don't know. You guys are right. Tell me to be quiet or shut up or whatever, I, I can do it. Um, so by way of reminder, there are, I believe, four full-time positions through what was court service employees, um, that are doing the background checks, the actual N C I C checks that are embedded, that they actually sent under the jurisdiction of the detention center. So they're employees now at the detention center. Um, there's been some, some, some development maybe in that regard, and there was a change in the federal law that allows entities that are contracted with the counties to also have access not to run the reports, but to review the reports once they're ran. And so I would just also want to give you as much information as possible to tell you that daily the collaboration is improving. As you would guess with any transition, there's going to be some time of like, how do we coordinate? How do we communicate effectively? And I really feel like we're on, on the trajectory to really have all that worked out. So there are four staff that went to the Oklahoma County Detention Center to run the N C I C checks every day. Nobody is getting out, nobody's even being considered for, um, pretrial release without that full report being presented to the district attorney, uh, obviously the judge, but also the public prosecutor. They look at that, they make a decision on, on what would be in the best interest of community safety and so on and so forth. In addition to that, there is one employee, I believe, that went to the district attorney's office to do some, uh, ankle monitoring of a special kind of participant. Uh, it may be a participant that is involved in a certain case or may have information pertaining to a certain case that they feel like may be safe to be out, but need some extra sort of protection. Not, not that the person is more, uh, uh, more of a threat, but just needs some more, um, protection in the community. So it's kind of a specialized ankle monitoring arrangement that, that is, is supervised. That caseload is supervised every, the individual placed in the district attorney's office. So one employee at the district attorney's office, plus software and, and devices and whatever is needed to make the program work. And then I think four employees at the Oklahoma County Detention Center just to do their part of action for any of that.
What I'm unclear on is how those things weren't taken into account, or were they, and how were they taken into account when the contract was done? Were those things included in your contract originally, and then it was determined that you couldn't run N C I C checks? And so that part was backed out? How could the contract wasn't changed to account for that? Just, I don't, because it was just going to be taking what we were doing in-house and giving it to you guys, but then this wrinkle showed up. And I'm just curious about what that process looked like that got us in this situation. And I don't know who could answer, I just, I don't know. That's, I'm curious about that.
No, go ahead, Chris.
I, I don't know, but I don't want to speak too much, but, but from our perspective at least, what happened is knowing that, um, public safety, community safety, uh, the kind of outcomes the county would be proud of is at the forefront. We were asked to put together a, a budget based on, you know, how to manage our caseloads and how to provide the level of services that, that would be needed to, to reach all the objectives.
For all of it.
And, and to also, uh, the thing that we keep talking about, I know this is not your responsibility, but the advisory council that oversees the pre-trial services for Oklahoma County uh, had, uh, directed us to incorporate best practices, get, get the certification, the national certification of, uh, of bringing this program into a credential sort of level that meets all the best practices so that we can ensure community safety. That, so we took all that into account when we submitted the budget. And then, and as we were putting together the budget, the decision was made, determination was made that these four employees needed to go to a law enforcement entity. And then the DA's wanted the employee that they have for, for the reasons that they stated. And so we submitted the budget, uh, with what we understood we needed to have in order to make this thing work the way that we were being directed to make it work. Initially, it was approved, um, and then it was determined.
Was approved with or without those employees doing the N C I C checks and the DA's office.
The, the budget that you have, and, and I think it's emailed to you, maybe Randy had emailed it out. The actual budget, um, that's in your packet is what is approved. And it, it does not account for the employees that went to the jail or the district.
I didn't email it out, but I didn't have her.
I'm sorry. This, this is a budget that was approved.
Right. Which I think is what I have up here also.
Yes, sir.
So the part that the, and again, I don't know that you can answer this, but the, this part that the DA's office is playing, who, was that something that somebody was doing before? And it was in social services, or is this kind of a new thing that's cropped up that nobody was doing before?
It was in court services?
I think it was a part of court services. I.
That's what I don't, because I, we knew what court services budget was.
Yeah, I would, I would, so I want to tell you what I know. I just want to be as transparent as I can and I'm not, like, I would have the same conversation. It would probably be better if the DA's office and, and, and the detention center could be here. I think initially there might have been some thought, and I'm not, I'm just going to tell you what I remember, that given the fact that, that the detention center had some F T's that weren't filled, quite a few at that time, that they might, could have absorbed before within their budget. And I'm not asking that, they're like our key part. I'm not trying to throw them in the big buzz, I'm deciding their conversation. That of the thirty or forty, um, unfilled F T's, maybe four of those could have been filled this way through, you know, by absorbing that. And then I think we would contend that, that we thought that we would be doing the specialized, um, ankle monitoring. And a decision was made that, that, that should, Ms. Behenna said she wanted that at her office for some, some other reasons, and she can speak to that, that, that decision was not part of ours. What I can tell you is that we are supervising more of people in ankle monitoring this kind of generally than, than we had anticipated, which is great. It gives us that extra level of security. Uh, and we can account for it by this vacant, you know, not, we have the money and the budget to account for it for, for the full twelve months. But, um, but I don't, without them being here, I don't, I don't, I can't answer beyond what I, this share.
So, uh, you always hear, and I might question the value of what team does. Um, I think there's tremendous value there. But you always think, well, it's less expensive to have somebody on an ankle monitor than it is to have them taking up a bed.
Of course.
But we haven't seen the savings on people going to ankle monitors. It's just everything's more expensive. So I think there's just kind of a fundamental problem here that, that is not on you. I'm not saying, I'm saying it more for the rest of us, but, I mean, it's not like some of what would have been spent on the bed for them if they weren't out on ankle monitor, that does not fall with them. Up there and you don't, there's no peace dividend, there's no windfall for, like, making things smarter than what we were doing. It's just more expensive.
Right, I'm looking at like you look at five dollar, are we looking at? The same number, less or more? And I'm just guessing by the first month that you've looked at, that you will expend that budget through the end of the year. I remember, right, this is going to be more than it was previously. Is that what I remember?
Like three hundred and something?
Three hundred and eighty thousand dollars more or so than the previous.
I was a little bit, in the original budget numbers that I had in my head, I was, I know that I was wrong on the numbers that I had. Um, and I think you were down there flagging one day during a budget meeting. I'm sure you don't remember those because I don't. But I didn't take into account any of the special revenue and service fees that they had. I was specifically looking at the general fund allotment that we gave Grant and his team. Do you have any idea?
I don't have those numbers with me and I should have brought them.
All of them.
I should have brought them. They were as funny in twelve sixty.
I think if I recall, because I remember specifically, um, comparing the total team budget, which was one point three, comparing it to that, adding all of the special revenues for court services, I think it was like, uh, teams like one point three five. I think that one was like one point three eight eight. I mean, it was, it was within about forty thousand dollars under.
I, I, I believe that's what I recite, too. That's kind of where I was headed, because I think.
It was, it was very close.
I think the kicker was not the team has increased it, I think.
The kicker was adding the other two.
That's right. No, that's why, that's why it's not quite right to take it out of team's hide because.
Right.
Which is what the conversation we had was if we are going to pull money back from anywhere this fiscal year, we can't fund the full thing. We can't just be having the conversation about team and their contract and looking at just pulling money from them. We need to look at all three because it's, I mean, we can't, it's not fair to single out the one that we were looking at from the beginning of doing everything. And then when we couldn't do, send everything over there and had to send stuff somewhere else, couple of other places to not even have a conversation about those M O U's.
Yeah, admittedly, when I, when I was set for the sheriff on budget board, I was, I had the wrong number in my mind that what, what the original.
Because of the special revenues that weren't taken.
Right, I wasn't, I didn't familiarize myself with the special revenues that were in fact part of.
Right.
Grant's budget.
Yeah, the team contract fell between thirty and forty thousand dollars less than all of those funds put together.
Uh, I think I remember that as well, now that you say that.
Could I, could, may I, this, this for, because you guys are digging deep, and I love that, I mean, I love that, um, so much.
You don't love it that much because you're short on funding.
I don't want to be short on funding, but I love the fact that I'm going to make you time to really kind of explain some nuances. The other thing that I would tell you is, and I think this is what you were rooting for, but when the county had the contract, including for ankle monitors, if an individual, if the court said, I want Chris Gill to be on the ankle monitor, but I couldn't pay the forty dollars a month, which kind of covers the, the software expenses and the technology and all the stuff just to make it work. And we're sharing all that with law enforcement, obviously, as you know. Um, if I couldn't pay that, or whoever could pay that, there was a fund, an indigent fund that, that would pay the county back for those folk. The best practices will not allow, now, we don't get to, we don't get to determine who the courts ultimately say gets out. We just provide the services to who they give to us to provide the services for. But, but if we're going to achieve this national certification, which we're there, if somebody legitimately cannot pay for a condition the court has imposed, and there's a means test to determine that, a legitimate means test, we can't charge them. I mean, that, we would be out of compliance, we wouldn't, we wouldn't attain the national, because that's not the, the best practice. You can't, can't ask somebody to do something that they can't do and then, and then there'd be consequences legally, anyway. So I'm just telling you, included in our number is not a separate, we don't have that separate account that we can pay ourselves back. It was like fifty thousand dollars or whatever it was that the county has. That's included in, in our invoices for anybody who can't pay that or pay that full amount. We're just having to, to recoup that as best we can. So that's another area, and I. So that's another area and I think that was probably included in those special services that you just identified.
It was part of twelve sixty. Yes, it was just a separate cost.
Yes, ma'am.
Now, on that point though, if someone, I get it, if someone meets the indigent, whatever test, you said the means test, and they can't pay, I get that. But the county, there are people that can pay.
Sure, sure.
And the county brought in forty to eighty thousand, just looking at the last two fiscal years. Is that not an option?
Yes, it is an option for us.
So, we're still projecting, looking forward January to June, are we expecting a shortage still based upon previous discussions?
We have three hundred on the watch list and I felt comfortable about it when we put it on, but I don't know what may have changed by now.
Yes, so I'm saying nothing has really changed. Well, I think the only thing that may have changed was the freeing up of some of the encumbrances that were in the.
We took that into account though.
I know, we did, but we were kind of estimating what we thought. Miranda brought her calculations as to what she thought she was going to be releasing. And I'm just saying that if we were off on what some of those encumbrances that were going to be released were, other than that, we should be right where we were before.
I have noticed that the employee in Ms. Behenna's office, unbeknownst to me, came down and put some GPS fees in twelve sixty. And, I don't know, she says there's more coming. I know we didn't close twelve sixty, I thought that it was, but I didn't know we were going to be putting money in there. So that's something else to address, unless we let it ride this year. But ultimately, twelve sixty needs to be closed and this all become contracts anyways for next fiscal year. But there's a little money coming in there. This one receipt was four thousand, seven hundred and seventeen dollars. So I don't know if that could turn around then and go towards the shortage with team. They put it in twelve sixty, I don't know.
Maybe we could for this fiscal year and maybe next fiscal year, we can set that to offset the DA's one person that we're funding.
And I thought, I thought it was three employees at CJA and when the change was made or that MOU was done, they only were able to hire two. I didn't know that it was four.
No, they had one that left. Initially, it was four and then there was a talk about three and then.
MOU says three.
Then they had three go over and then one left. I don't think they're fully funded, three.
You don't think what?
I don't think they've got three FTEs over there right now in position, if that's what you're asking. No, they're funded for three. No, I know, but I don't think. There wasn't, they had one leave and then, I don't know if it's been filled or what, but.
Do they need three? I mean, can we amend there?
Of course we can amend, we can amend all three. I mean, and I think that's what we were kind of saying. If we don't have the additional money, say it's, that three hundred thousand dollars is the number to provide all of those services, if we don't have that, then what are we going to do? And if we're going to have to cut, then we need to look at all three MOUs and not just the one to look at making those cuts. And I think it had been mentioned, but that was kind of the thought process going in was that if we were going to have the other folks that weren't going to team go down to the jail with them not having all of their FTEs, that that would be able to be offset over there. And when it was determined that the individual that is at the DA's office couldn't go to team, I completely understood that, but there was a thought that they were also going to go with the other three individuals and go to the jail. But then the jail determined that they didn't think that that person, it was appropriate for them to be there. So then it wound up shifting over to the DA's office. So, I think from the BOCC standpoint, I think there was a lot of thought that that money wasn't going to be needed this fiscal year to be addressed because the jail was taking that over and that there was some FTE flexibility there. I have some questions that I know are going to be obvious to you, that's why I'm just going to ask them. So, in math, to me, order of operation matters. So, what was the, mainly the people in the BOCC, what was the timeline on how this was set up? So, we realized that Grant's team was going away, the actual incumbents of those positions were going away. And then the BOCC made a decision to fund team at one point three five, at a one point three five million dollar contract. Was that the next step in that order? I'm looking at you, but I don't mean to point you out.
That was, that was the budget that team proposed.
Okay, which.
To take over all of it.
Which was under the budget that Grant had at one point three eight eight. So, where I'm headed is, so was team the first step in that process that was approved by the BOCC? Or, and the reason I'm asking is because again, I mean, I mean, and I'll admit when I, I feel like I was talking to my boss from a perspective that I maybe didn't fully understand. Because what, I mean, and I don't mean it this way when I say this, that's not my intent, but what I feel like is that team presented a contract to do the services that was less than the amount that was budgeted for Grant's team. And then somehow, the jail and the DA's office has slid in and has taken some of that money. And I'm just trying to understand the order of operation and how it happened. If team came first, I don't see why we're. Team's contract was approved before the, it was approved and then the next step, I believe, was the jail trust.
Yeah, I don't know which one paid. So the DA was last.
I believe so, but they were both after.
But team was first.
Do you see where I'm heading?
When I asked that question earlier, Chris, that sounded like at least the positions that check NCIC that's over at the jail were backed out of your contract back then. Is that, because that was something that came up and.
The reality is this, and I just want to tell you, this contract, and I want to go back and correct myself. You are right, it was a total of four employees and three went to the detention center and then one with not, not four, not five, not four and one, but three and one. So thank you for that correction. So what I remember is they said ultimately as we were putting, it kind of happened fast at the end of fiscal year, like in June, we were asked to actually start providing the services, absorb the services for thirty days. But in that thirty days, put together the budget of what it would take. We were looking at, you know, our projected growth and all the things. And so we put together the budget that we felt like it would take. The step we missed, and to your point, the step that we missed is that that budget did not come through this body, it went straight to the county commissioners. Because we had to get something signed and it was literally, you guys didn't meet before there was time for them to sign it. So we put together the budget and said, this is what we felt like it would take. And we felt like it was close to the budget that you guys had been operating within, just a little bit less, but we also felt like that we were going to be serving more people in short order. And so we're trying to take all those things into consideration. The county commissioners actually approved the contract. And then it was determined that these other entities need to go to these places, that the three need to go to the jail that are doing the NCIC checks and the one for the specialized thing and that came after ours. And so we were still operating under the budget that we gave. We, this is the budget literally that we submitted and those four positions are not in this budget.
And so, I kind of want to follow, I feel like I keep coming up with questions. So, on the DA's office, you said that they supervise, like, they ankle monitor special people, right? So, is that, was that something that over and above what court services doing prior?
No.
It's not?
Same person was doing it for court services and just moved over to the DA's office.
Okay. And then the next question is, so is the jail only doing NCIC checks? Is that what they're doing? And the reason I ask is because for somebody who has experience doing thousands of NCIC checks just in the course of my career, how many NCIC checks, how many NCIC checks do they do? Are you familiar with how those work? I mean, basically, you punch a, you punch a name and a DOB into a terminal and it pops up instantaneously, once in seconds, I can tell you what their record is. It's not a long. I believe they do that and then. And then I think they're doing a summary, they're writing a summary based on that report. And then that summary, then based upon change, now you guys were able to see it. Before, you weren't even able to see it. But that summary is then utilized by the DA's office and the public defender's office to look at to see if they're going to recommend, you know, somebody to be released pre-trial to team. And then that summary is presented to the judge for the judge to be able to make the determination. Do you know the number of those summaries that's happening, Matt?
We're doing a hundred and twenty a day.
There's a hundred and twenty summaries a day?
I would say.
On Mondays, I think there's.
I would part of a bunch. Yeah, I could.
Okay, well, okay, I would.
The only step that we, you have to exactly right, the only step is when the DA and the public defender agree that Chris Gill should be released, then team goes and meets with Chris and does an interview and says, hey, if you're out, these are the conditions that you're going to have to agree to, do you agree to? And if they sign that, then we can present that to the judge and say, Judge, this is the documentation that Chris has said that he will do these things that have been recommended. And the judge can add something to that or take something away.
Makes kind of another weird question. So, in the national standard that you're trying to achieve and follow, is it national standard to run like triple I's and NCIC checks? Or can people get on backgroundcheck.com and just pull up the stuff that would be available to any employer? Do you know what that standard particularly is?
It's, it's, it's OLETs and NCIC. That because before, before we had the opportunity to work at this level, we were just doing the background checks based off of OLCN. Like, we were just going on OLCN and just spending, doing as much research as we could and presenting that information for anybody that wasn't considered. The problem with that is we were missing some information. You can't see what's going on in another state or what has gone on in another state. So the best practices, the NCIC, there you go.
Okay, so like what about states, which OLETS is specific to Oklahoma? What like, what like, they just should have sold a national long-term, like they use the INLTS for, then that's the standard around the country, okay?
Yes, sir.
And I think part of the hope in the beginning was that all of those employees could be transferred over and the ones that are running the OLETS or INLTS and writing the reports could be doing other things as well, doing interviews. And so that they would be able to have some efficiencies by taking those employees and utilizing them in other areas. Whereas after we did the contract, then it was determined, well, no, those folks can't go over there. So now we have to not have the efficiency of you having them doing that and then helping on the other stuff, has to have the other employees do the other stuff. And now these employees have to do specifically this. And it was determined that it would go over to the jail for those employees to do that and then the one employee to go over to the DA's office.
So employees of team couldn't be at the jail? Like, these three could be team employees that did not.
It was the team employees, team as an entity, since they're not a governmental entity or law enforcement, I'm sorry, not even just government, they weren't a law enforcement entity. They were not authorized to run OLETs reports, nor were they authorized to even see an OLET report or the summary of the report that the individual that ran and wrote just a summary, they couldn't even see that. Now, that's been cleared up to where you guys could see the summary, but they still can't pull the report and they can't see the report, but they can see a summary.
So we're paying the jail more money for these four, three people?
Yes.
Yes.
Two hundred and something thousand.
That's why we didn't have any money left for the other six months.
BOCC did what they did and then I didn't even know that there was even a talk about it until after the criminal justice authority had a meeting with, Brandon actually called me and asked me about it because he didn't know and I was out and I wasn't watching the meeting. There was an agenda item on there for an MOU between the county and them for the three individuals. And so Brandon called me to ask me what's going on with this. And I was like, what are you talking about? I mean, I had no clue in.
Well, I think that's a big draw, the savings right there, I'm sorry. I mean, it goes back to the point I made earlier about where's the peace dividend here? I mean, fewer people taking up bed space, it's a savings. We're not getting it, it's costing us more money. The jail's getting it, but they have fewer people. And I know they have fixed costs, they get all that stuff, but they have all these unfilled positions that are funded. Why in the world are we giving them extra money for this? Honestly, I mean, and then the DA is a separate question, but I'm totally confused. I'm either really confused or really angry, I just don't know which yet, but why aren't we doing that? Because that's a big, that's how much to something?
Yeah.
Of the three hundred eighty that we're looking for is right there where we're double paying for this stuff? Good night. I actually cleaned that up more than I thought.
I was about to back up.
Where's the dump button?
I would also say to the sheriff's point, I do think that these are not full-time positions. I mean, I do think that you need more than one person. Somebody's going to be sick, somebody's going to take vacation, all of that sort of stuff. But I do believe and I promise I'm not trying to speak for Brandy and I think she's doing a great job, but I do think the idea, at least initially, was when these folk aren't working on NCIC checks and summaries, they could be utilized to help perform some other stuff that needs to be done.
But at the end of the day, that doesn't matter because we're, there are what, two hundred and sixteen employees that fund them? Three twenty, three forty, whatever, I mean, there's room for four people, three people. I mean, that's what.
Especially if part of their tasks are ordinary jail operations too.
Well, that's what this is, it's helping determine who stays and who goes out of the jail. I mean, it's not like it's completely unrelated thing.
Well, we, and I hate to, I mean, when we ran the jail though, we had somebody in receiving that ran NCIC checks, that's just what they did.
How many?
I mean, everybody that was released at least. At that time, a hundred and fifty a day. And so that's where I was headed with how many are we going today? Because, you know, coming back to the standards, there's a standard that says, I'm going to run NCIC or interstate, you know, and not triple I's what it's really called. But so when a triple I's ran, you know, that tells us, well, does Cleveland County want this person? Or does, you know, does somebody in Washington want this person? That you're not going to be able to get from OLCN or something like that. There's just no way to check every quarter of records, there's just two trillion of them. But yeah, we had, I mean, however many were released, I mean, there was years where we took in fifty-five thousand people and released fifty-five thousand, so fifty-five thousand divided by three sixty-five, that kind of gives you that.
But you weren't writing the summaries.
We weren't writing the summaries, I mean.
So when did that transition to court services or were they both?
Well, it never did, it never did. I was just, I was more so trying to outline the time frame it takes to actually run a triple I. It's pretty fast.
So you're running that anyway on everybody that comes in there?
So, yeah, and the thought was.
So why are we running it twice?
The thought was if we're going to have to have employees that weren't with team after we did a contract miracle, they can't be there, then the most logical step was, well, those employees could be employees of the trust because down at the jail, they already have folks that are pulling INLTS, NCICs. So if somebody does call in sick or whatever, you've got somebody there that's already, because you have to be licensed specifically to be able to do that, you can't just be any employee at the jail. You have to be licensed, so there's other people there that are licensed that can step in and run the reports and do everything. So we thought, you know, it's just going to be efficient and everything would move smoothly and then. everything would move smoothly, and then we wound up having MOU to pay for that.
We're paying two different people to pull the same report twice.
Well, I don't know what the current are doing, I mean, I just mean, back when we were running it, I know that every person who came in got a triple I.
But we don't know whether the jail, the detention center's doing that now?
Yeah, I don't know that.
Well, but there's, on the reports that I get on the daily count, it has, um, holds, for instance. So, they'd have to be running-
You gotta be doing it like that to answer the state, well, I mean, stuff, right?
Yeah, not necessarily. Some holds can be as simple as, you know, like, when they bring in the original buck slips, the bucket slips. Whenever they bring that stuff in, it might be, hey, we've gotta, we gotta, you know, investigate a hold on this person for whatever reason. So, basically, there's, maybe they're looking for a, hey, we're about, Brandy's about to get out of jail, you know, you know, we'll, we'll be able to work a paper over the next four hours if you want.
But there's-
We come together.
But there's folks on there that are, on their first ice holds and for other jurisdictions. Are they, aren't they, are they not getting that information from?
Not necessarily, not necessarily.
Okay.
But what you, it would seem like you would run NCIC to make sure, like, they're not one of them in Washington or some other place.
Again, we did, I don't, I don't know what's currently doing that. 'Cause otherwise, we-
Yeah, they almost have to be.
I mean, so, like, for, for example-
That would be my guess, is that they are.
Like, for example, if, if somebody, so again, since Brandy's our criminal for the day. So, I mean, whenever she was releasing, if, again, if, if somebody from Washington wanted her on a crime that they have, you know, we actually considered it a bad release if we released her and she had a warrant for another area. That's how, that's how we considered it, I don't, I don't know what they're doing necessarily, I mean, but-
They're, they're holding for other jurisdictions, at least on their reports.
Sure.
So, they, they have to know that there are holds from other jurisdictions, otherwise they wouldn't know to hold them.
It's hard to imagine, the biggest detention center in the state is not checking people when they come in to see who all wants you, if anybody. I got this, which means that we're paying extra money. On top of the extra money we're paying to fund positions that aren't filled to do something twice, it sounds like. Maybe we're, at least, they should only be making summaries, producing summaries of things that are already being produced. I don't-
Yeah, more so, for me, I, I wasn't, I was just trying to figure out what the, what the quantity was, just 'cause I, again, from experience, you know, about how long it takes, I mean, it was, I mean, literally, from my phone, within a second, I could get dispatched to send me your-
And I don't know what these look like, 'cause I, I, your numbers are trustworthy, I just don't know of the summary piece, and what that, how sophisticated it is, and how long these are, but it sounds like we have two hundred and seven thousand dollars of the three hundred and eighty thousand dollars for short here.
And see, what I thought, too, this was shot down, but I had asked the question, and Brandon, you are gonna be the resident expert in here on this, but I had assumed that, you know, once we pull the, the NCIC, the summary is just a summary of what's in the report. There, it's not a narrative of this person, uh, it, it's just a-
A ten-page document.
Exactly, yeah, so-
Is it summary and cut and paste, of only a portion that can be shared, or do they have to re-enter? That's why I don't know what that is.
Is there not an AI tool out there that you can get that is going to pull? I was told legally, no, you, they can't do it, but I don't know if that's true or not. But you would think that there would be, even if it's not something to be housed on an outside server, but something that was on an internal secured server, that when you pull that NCIC, it automatically just flips it into summary format, so you don't have to have employees sitting there.
I'm sure, I'm curious why you can't issue the report, what, what cannot be included in the summary that's on the-
It's a segest thing, so it's, it's purely a segest thing, so the criminal justice information system-
So, it's not specific things that have to be in or out, it's just you cannot share it in that format. So, you have, the easiest thing is to summarize.
Yeah.
So, you just-
So, so, like, I mean-
So, you just, as long as you jumble it up a little bit, it's not the same.
Well, it's, well, again, it's one of those things, so like, when a triple I comes out, well, here's what gets weird, because it, it's like, it's like it comes out on a, I mean, you know the old sprocket paper? I mean, I mean, literally, that's almost what it's like. And the problem is, like, especially when you take a common name, for example, like, look, I mean, I don't know how common Jason Nelson is, but if I run Jason Nelson, it's not going to bring you up only. It's gonna bring up four thousand aliases of anybody that ever even remotely tried to use your name. And you've gotta go through a decipher, you know, with, so it's not, it's not super obvious, it's not quite as, it's not quite as obvious as you might think it might be, um, you know, so it's kinda weird in that regard. And it's split up into multiple categories, you know, I, if they're running what we call, what's called a full boat, so that'd be, that's the whole camp, and if they're running, if they're running all that, it'll pull that driver's license information, so if they have any flag restrictions on that, it'll pull back if they have any state charges anywhere, if, if they got any federal charges, get thrown on the RSO list anywhere, I mean, it'll pull, and it's all in different sections on this thing. It's like, so even somebody that comes back that's clear, it's like, for example, if you run my background check, I mean, even though I'm clear, my background check comes back with, apparently, somebody with my name has committed a bunch of felonies in New York, and it pops that up on me every time. You know, but somebody like you may not, maybe not. So, but even on somebody who comes back clear, it's still a three-page document, because there's multiple sexes that, 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 you know, international, you know, index is pulling, 'cause it's pulling it from the whole world, anywhere that you've, I mean, it'll, it'll tell you every time you've been fingerprinted, it tells you every time, you know, I mean, it, it, it includes way too much information.
Well, but anyway, we should only be pulling the report once, and then writing a summary once, and it sounds like we're doing it twice, we're doing it a second time, and then doing a summary by double funding positions at a political subdivision that should be realizing a savings by helping facilitate this whole thing to begin with. And it's two hundred, whatever, it's two hundred and some thousand dollars that we're paying the detention center, what is, how much?
Do you know that number?
I do, I just calculated that, it's, um, one hundred and forty-five, based on their MOU, one forty-five, seven fifty-two.
That was for the detention center?
That's-
For those three?
Yes, sir.
I like two thousand.
One forty-five, what?
See, we talked about this last time, and I questioned that number, too. So, forty-five thousand bucks, each of them alone's twenty-five thousand a year.
Yeah.
If they take family, so, I mean, again, just do quick math.
Oh, you're asking wrong.
It's probably not in the last year.
I'll buy you lunch if you do this.
Is, is that a six-month, you know? That, that might be a good point, is that a six-month figure?
That is, uh, for the full fiscal year, broken out, it's twelve thousand and some change that we're paying per month, uh, reimbursed. So, I actually just got in-
Barbing that. Yeah, we did.
Really, huh?
Well, being that Friday's November first, and we're good through till the end of the year. We don't move, so that we would have some recommendation or form of action, if necessary, of any, so that, I mean, obviously, we don't want that program to just stop at the end of the year, and then we go-
Essentially, we need to find the funding for the other six months of the Team's contract.
Right, and that's kinda where I'm going, is, is, we, we're gonna be tasked with that with this coming-
I mean, what, what happens with the contract, so for example, I mean, my guess technically, at any moment, the B O C C could reach out and say, hey, we've reevaluated this thing, and we, we don't need-
I think-
Not with Team, but like with detention, right?
I, I don't know if they included, like, a thirty-day-out clause on those.
Yeah.
There was a clause, I can't remember, it's thirty or sixty.
I think it's sixty.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we're approaching-
Well, we, we still had some money left, that's why we only did three hundred on the watch list.
Yeah.
We've gotta, we've gotta pull all the reports again and see what, what we have.
Uh, Andy, I, I can only speak for myself, and again, I work for, everybody in here works for somebody, but I'm pretty uncomfortable going back to my boss and explaining that we need a short Team's contract, when in reality, and what, what it sounds like to me is they came in with a contract that was under budget, and, under, under the allotted amount that was given to Grant, and somehow, some way, two other entities came in and stole a little bit of the money, it was terrible, went with that, and that's not what I mean, for the record, but, I mean, come in and-
And I agree with everything you said, rather than come in on tape. It's, it's more like there was, it was quick, and there was some situations discovered after Team, and there was some afterthought, is how the other things came about, but I, I agree with-
I don't think it was nefarious, I just, I just-
Can I, can I just, I love your heart, and I hear what you're saying, but I, I do wanna be fair. I think the, the coming in afterwards was just all from a really good place of trying to solve the problem.
Yeah.
Um, that's, I mean, everybody in this room wants a part of that solution, so I don't, I mean, you, you said this quote-unquote, there was nothing nefarious about it, it's just that it shook out.
Yeah, well, and I, more so what I mean with that, 'cause I don't think there's anything, I mean, funny going on, but I, I don't feel it's, it's right for, again, I'm just one person, 'cause I don't feel like it's right, like it's right for you to come in and be the only one that's gonna figure out a way to cough up three hundred thousand, when there's a clear, you know, like Jason said, there's a clear option for the detention center, that they're gonna turn back in five million dollars just to your property, you know?
They're, they're not gonna, they don't turn back in.
Well- They're afford more than one million dollars, which, you know, and, and so, that, that's more so mine, again.
When where is that savings?
Right.
From doing the smarter criminal justice?
Yeah, so I don't, right, again, I mean, in my original, I, I was, I was totally-
Is that your recommendation?
Actively timelines and whatever else, so-
To take it out of the detention center somehow, absolutely, because where is the savings? All I know is that all this stuff's supposed to say it's the right thing to do. But doing the right thing, in this particular case, should by all reason save you money, but it's costing us more money, so we've made a mistake somewhere that needs to be corrected, and not at the expense, it doesn't appear, of Team. That's what I'm trying to get at, I think that's, at least as I've discussed it with my boss on the budget board and a few other people, I think that's kinda what we're looking at, is what, how do we realize the savings of doing the smart thing and the right thing here? Then if we're paying, I just don't understand why we pay, it has nothing to do with anything that the detention center's doing, I mean, it's not, I'm not questioning them, but why are we paying them extra for position? I mean, they've got a lot of slack in their funded position, why are we doing that?
I think part of that was because they agreed to take on those three people extra, specifically, because for one reason or another, they were not-
Take them on extra, they have extra.
Well, I mean, in addition to, because you had three people that were court services that for one reason or another either did not want to go to Team or could not go to Team, um-
They couldn't, yeah.
Well, um-
Well, they, they, yeah, okay.
So, they agreed to take on, um, three people, just to be a partner in this process.
That's right.
Didn't you say that they were gonna be doing different jobs as well?
Um, I didn't know that, um, I don't know if that's what ended up happening, you know?
Well, I, I don't know, I didn't say that part, I said that, um, that was mentioned by somebody, but what I was saying was that they had indicated that they had other people that were licensed to pull inlets, so if there was a situation to where they had some agency something quit, or they had two people out sick or whatever, they still had people that were licensed that could step in and pull reports. And I didn't mention this earlier, but I was also told that, you know, those would be positions that some of their employees would like, and so that they could then utilize those positions as a, you know, step-up opportunity for other employees, a carrot, if you will, for, you know, performing other functions and, and jobs, well. Now, I, I, I'm assuming, shouldn't assume, but I, I would hope that they're employees of the detention center, and if it is a situation to where it doesn't take that long to run the inlets, and they get the summaries written, and they have extra time, I'm not saying that they do, but if they do, I would hope that the jail would have other things for them to do to help, because if not, then we need to look at, you know, do we need to fund that many positions, right? So, I would, I would assume that they would be available, now whether they have the time to do other things for the jail, that I can't answer, but I would assume that they would be available to do other things if needed.
Well, never, sorry.
Could I add just, you know, another caveat for you guys to consider? I, I wanna acknowledge and validate that three hundred thousand dollars is not there. Nothing else matters, and your job on this board is, that's where you're at, you've gotta try to figure this out. Uh, I would just wanna mention that, um, we built this team to have capacity, kind of maximum capacity, to actively supervise at a level that, that we would, you would all want us to be supervising at, manage our caseloads and everything, at about nine hundred thirty to nine hundred fifty, nine, nine fifty is on the high end of that. We're at eight forty-three right now. And the way our program works is when a person, when their case is disposed, meaning that it's resolved, whatever that may be, it could be going to prison, it could be, um, moving into drug court, it could be, you know, wherever the courts, whenever that, that case is disposed, we're done at that point. Somebody else has taken over the supervision and the responsibility, so when people roll off, um, this, this, no, that's a point, for some that we supervise, that's two months, for some that we supervise, that's six weeks, for some that we supervise, and so on and so forth. But I would just mention that I, I do feel like that we're on pace, and this is not how you can calculate it, not how you can see it, but if you look at the number of people that were, that, what it's costing us to serve, the number of people we're serving per person, it is, it does represent a cost savings to the state, 'cause it's not gonna be costing us as much per, you know, per participant. Um, it's just because of the volume and, and the synergy, and, and none of this would be happening, none of those dynamics would be happening without, right now, the involvement of the detention center and the district attorney's office, so I guess I just wanna say that as we grow this program, and if we're able to effectively serve more people and hopefully help more families and the whole nine yards, I just don't wanna leave this room as having said anything derogatory toward our key partners in this process.
No, and I, and I, I'm trying to be careful not to say anything derogatory about anything here at all, but for every person that you all take on that doesn't sit in the detention center is a cost savings to the county, but we've structured this thing in such a way that it's more expensive for the county. And so, that is what has got to be fixed. I mean, we can take it with the contracts, but to me, it's a bigger thing, and I'll just say it, the, the, the detention center is a separate political subdivision, it's creating a problem right now, because this oughta be one thing that works, is the county. So, if you were funding criminal justice stuff, and you don't go to the detention center, or you go there, but we can divert you, then that money follows you there. But now we're gonna have a whole separate contract that we fully fund and stand it up, and then you're gonna have the one for the detention center, we fully fund and stand it up. We've made the thing more expensive, not, and somewhat more challenging to just operate on a daily basis, but for the fact that you all are good partners, so we're not, it's not, it's really has nothing to do with you or the detention center, in my mind, it has to do with the system we have in place right now is, is, no longer makes any sense. And the only other thing that'll make any sense is nothing's happening with that information, and that, except that it's just more expensive. Doing the smart thing, but this saving us money is somehow amazingly costing more money. And I, I mean, I just don't know when we're gonna say that and go, can we please stop doing this? And let's do something differently, where it's, so that way, you guys are more than partners, you're part of the same, it's a one-fluid motion, if you go to detention center, you're there, if not, you go over here, the money follows you, and it's a savings right there. I mean, it's realized, there's not to, I mean, you'd still be a separate private nonprofit, but that's how that would be funded. And yet, we're, there's a lot of carryover money building at the detention center. We're funding extra employees separately, outside of, for some reason, and it's, you're not getting the funds flow that you need to do the ankle monitoring that you're doing that isn't. Good thing, I'm assuming, I mean, given that these people aren't out on ankle monitors killing people, I think it's a good thing, so, but we, we're not even talking about that. We're so far away from that because of the structure of this whole thing.
And I think the rollover that you mentioned, that's, I mean, that's key right there, because when we were talking about this and doing the MOU with the, the detention center, it was like late July, August, something like that, you'd already had a month of fifty employees that they were funded for that they didn't have to pay for for that month. That, in and of itself, fully funded the entire year for the three employees that they were moving over there. The, the salary dollars, unlike when the sheriff was running it, when they were short on staff, that money got rolled back to the county at the end of the year, and we use that to budget so that they can be fully funded on that same number of employees for that next year. We don't get that money back here, so we're, we're stuck- We don't get that money back here, so we're, we're stuck funding and then refunding and then refunding, and we don't have that money come back, whereas if we did, then, you know, we fund this stuff, and then if we're short, we.
That was smart criminal justice, we start to realize smart criminal justice here, it just gets more expensive.
Well, I don't disagree with anything that you guys are saying, it's just that I don't think that this group of board has any authority to require that. And speaking on behalf of the jail, I would think the jail would probably look at us and say, we didn't ask to take on the additional workload, so there's, like you said, there's this standpoint.
I'm guessing we don't need to trust anymore to run a jail, wasn't really what I'm saying, because we're, it's costing more money instead of.
That's something that this, this conversation's.
Well, that's a whole nother conversation.
But I mean, you can, you can. I mean, I'm just. I'm not talking about what's easier, whatever, I'm just talking about what, I mean, it's, how is it that smarter criminal justice that is actually saving us money is costing more money?
I, I mean, I, I assume, I think it just, it sounds like there was just a couple of different players, and to your point, I, I know, in no way speaking disparagingly about the DA's office, I think that they're obviously playing a vital role in this, detention center's playing a vital role. I think just what it sounds like is that there was a vacancy, and, you know, I mean, just like when the new iPhones came out, everybody's just running to get the iPhones, you know, and I think that there was a, there was a, I mean, because of the fast turnaround and the inability for us to have conversations like this, I mean, you know.
It wasn't brought to the ET first, right?
Well, to that, well, probably because of the timeline, you know, and my dad, always growing up, every time I bought something I didn't need, he said, well, that's the stupid tax you get to pay, and it sounds like that may be where we're at this year, you know, until we can really sit down and try to figure out, you know, because, I mean, the bottom line is this, and I go back to, and I know there's, I know there's nuances and things.
He's not here for me, is he?
He's here for you. Oh, that's my thinking. So, I think, I think, um, that threw me off. So, I think for me, it's, that's what it sounds like to me, and I mean, you know, obviously, team before all this took place was doing good work in their own way, I mean, it sounds like there's some new things that they maybe weren't able to take on as part of the, I don't really know if that's the right, but, I mean, so, you know, I mean, let me ask you this, if, if detention center, DA's office didn't step up, let's say that they weren't even an option, are you able to provide the service that you, that you started? Like, could you use the old model that you had prior time to do what you're doing now with the additional staff or the additional?
You could be accredited, but could you still do the work?
And they, they wouldn't get the NCICs, so.
So, yeah, the, the facts, a couple of things, and I wanna, I wanna be, you've asked a really important question, when, when team was doing this, uh, without the opportunity to collaborate at this level, uh, the only thing that we had to go on were, was public information, OSCE, and, and it was quirky, and to be fair, uh, we, we don't, we wouldn't know what somebody else did in another state, and if, if there wasn't somebody else there looking at something, a report, you know, two eyes looking at some report, and what I mean two eyes, I mean the DA and the judge, or the DA, the judge and the public defender, I mean, all of us kind of looking, um, then we may have missed something, so it was a much slower process. Um, we're, we're securing the release of, you know, probably a hundred thirty a month, a hundred and forty a month right now, I mean, it's every day, uh, that we get eighteen, twelve people out that have been cleared, and it's getting better and better and better, more efficient with better information. Better information, I think, results in better decision making, so that, that we can, we, we have a standard, this is.
There's a lot of studies that support that.
Yeah, yeah.
The more and better and accurate information you have, the better decision.
It's not just trying to decide if we're gonna let Chris out because we kinda like him, you know, you're looking at some, some factors that's, that's gonna, either I'm safe to be out or I'm not, period, and there's kind of a standardized measure, and then I've gotta, I've gotta commit to do my part, but all of that is expedited at a level that we've never seen before right now.
And if we were, before, you guys were doing that, but then our court services department was working up a, a lot of people, and the judiciary was getting the full workup, if we didn't have that being done, then nobody would be getting the full workup.
So, was court services getting the NCIC reports?
Yeah, yes, court services was doing it.
They're covering the empty.
Yeah.
Well, that had to be law enforcement.
Well, our, our court services department was eligible to do it, so when we switch.
Specific certification.
The county commissioners could technically commission somebody with law enforcement abilities.
Yeah, so when, when it was determined that those folks could not work for team to provide that service, we were left with, um, basically three options. We could either continue to do it ourselves as DOCC, we could have, the DA's office could do, or I'm sorry, four, we could have the DA's office do it, we could have the detention center do it, or the sheriff's office could do it. Any of those entities could have those three employees, four employees, however many employees you need to run NCICs and write the summaries, any of those four entities could do it. We felt like down at the jail, with them running NCICs already, um, the flexibility that they would have to be able to fill in gaps if gaps need to be filled, that it made sense for those people to be employed down there, but there were in our other options.
Well, if I had to put this all in a motion right now to save us all extended misery, the motion would be to have the budget board and/or the BOCC or somebody start talking to the detention center about them covering the full cost of this, both what happens at the DA's office and what they're doing to support this, because it's the part of the same thing, we should just fund it once, we're funding it more than that, and it's, that's not acceptable, and if they come back with some proposal for budget board and BOCC or something, I don't know, to work that out, because they're carrying over money every year that really, part of the way they, reason they can do that is the savings and realizing, I'm hoping, I mean, an absent, some ramshackled motion like that, to have a committee of three of us or some, to go and start nailing some of this down, I am curious what it looks like, the detention center for these three people, where do they sit, are they full-time, part-time, how long is it, are they double pulling the reports, how long does it take to do the summary, is there a better way to do the summary, um, what, the same with the DA's office, and figure out how to make this work better within budget, so, and then the structure that, so as you don't fill a bed at the detention center, they go on ankle monitoring, we're not having to find extra money for Chris's group to go do extra ankle monitors. I mean, that, that, why are we, I don't understand, and so.
Well, could we have this agenda item on our next regularly scheduled BET and have representatives of the detention center and the DA's office come to speak to those exact points?
Do we wanna wait until next month? Because we're.
Well, we're not gonna have unless, absent a special budget board meeting, we're not gonna be able to do anything until after our next, uh, regularly scheduled, so we'll.
I know, but I don't wanna, I'm, I'm a little, little area of trying to solve it in the next meeting and just saying, oh, I'm sure it'll work. I mean, at least have a pretty good idea of my limits, I'm, I'm worried about me being put on the spot to do that, I think if we, the three of us.
What'd be nice is to chart out process.
To come back and we can be providing stuff to everybody, so we come to the meeting.
I get you, yeah.
But I don't, I mean, I, you know, you could go do it, I could go do it, but I think it makes sense to sanction a group of us, that's the four, to go and we can all sit and maybe talk over lunch or something and start figuring out division of labor, who can call who, we can.
Well, and, and that's.
To come back with a full package, we can bring brighter information beforehand.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's not a bad idea, I'm happy to help if, if you want me to, but, um, I think that, that, sitting down, I think, to Brandy's point, having them at the next meeting so that they can express their opinions in here, and then based upon the information that was gleaned through the next couple of weeks, and their presentations and discussions in this meeting, we can come up with a recommendation to budget board for their November meeting so that we can then get potentially new contracts, amended contracts, or addendums to current contracts onto BOCC, either late November or early December, that would then become effective January one. You know that? That's not a motion, I'm just.
No, I, I just think that's what we do by New Year's, but I think I'm still gonna keep harping more loudly, more often about the bigger picture problem, but I think that is the, precisely what needs to happen to get some certainty for Chris and for team and everybody else, and stop as quick as we can double paying for this stuff, it should all be part of the same. This is money going to deal with people that have got justice involved, to use that euphemism. I mean, it's, it really ought to be kind of one pot of money, one initiative, and it can be divided up into different domains as needed, but we've got it now where it's, we're saving money, and it's funny how it costs us more, I just think we've gotta stop that, and I think it's hard to do it in a meeting, so I don't know whether that needs to be a motion or what, but, um, my brain's tired and I'm hungry. Or being hungry, but I don't know, is it, I move that we appoint a committee to start taking the thing, the things we talked about in here and gathering information, providing it to the BET, to help us prepare for a productive meeting next time. Trying to answer all the catalog, the questions that have been asked in here, go out and explore those, and any other questions that come up. I've been volunteer, I, I demand that Brandon be a part of it. He does this stuff, and then I, you or you, I don't know, I mean, from the budget side, and I don't know if that gets us into a weird spot with BOCC employee, I don't know, but that's, then if somebody makes more sense to me, that's fine, I don't care, but.
If everything were fully funded at its, at its rate, the, the DA's contract, the detention center contract and team, where that money would come from, the general fund reserve, right? And it's on the watch list?
We have it on the watch list, and when we looked at this, we determined we were short three hundred thousand.
Okay.
Um, and that would then go all towards team's contract.
Right, okay.
I think it's worth looking at the balance of twelve sixty, these fees that are going in there still, um, if there's still any more encumbrances, I mean, my suggestion to team is look for some cost savings. I, I know we wanna be accredited, we all wanna get there, but sometimes you don't get there in one year, sometimes it might take two years to be accredited, especially in the situation we're in. Um, start looking at charging for GPS for the last six months, that could offset the three hundred, I mean, there's, there's things we can, we can look at to get, to get there.
But I, but I think to ask team to do it when the jail trust is carrying over how much money, it seems.
If someone can pay for GPS, they should be.
No, I agree with that, I'm just saying, but aren't you?
Get that going.
But the, you're funding for a base number of people on GPS, and you're about to exceed that?
We, we are.
I mean, you're close to.
Let me, yeah, we put a, a base number for GPS in our original budget, we're just getting more, I mean, we, we tried to, based on trends and everything else, we're just getting so many more out, and, and I would just also say, in, in all fairness, by virtue of being out on a conditional lawsuit accounting, you're indigent, like if you could afford to pay your own bond.
You would have done it, yeah.
Our clientele paid, I mean, I, I see the fees coming in every year.
Well, and that's part of what I didn't thought of, you brought it up, I think we're, what were those special revenue streams?
Well, we had, we had about sixty thousand a year is my recollection, on average, kinda coming in from ankle monitor.
One oh four.
But you're saying that they don't collect it because of the accreditation part, but it's revenue loss, so, so, yeah, I mean, I think that's part of what can be looked at and talked about more, and picking a lot of people's brains that, it's not quite realistic to everybody show up and be prepared to talk about whatever comes up.
Nominate whoever you want on your committee, let's move on.
Well, I nominated two people, I'm.
Okay, pick one more, brother.
Well, I mean, well, really, too, I mean, if you, Cody and Brandon, that would be great, but.
I'm gonna refrain, cause it's toxic.
But I don't know if you both could be on.
Yeah, I would, I would be very, be a little concerned about the overlap, or if we don't tell anybody.
You just did, well, I know.
I'm kidding.
Well, I don't know, you guys, they join in, who wants to volunteer?
I'm in a respectfully decline just because of the tax season.
You're busy?
I, I, I wouldn't volunteer as long as it would not pose a conflict.
Well, I wouldn't, I don't think it would pose it, what do you mean pose a conflict?
Well, as far as my relation to BOCC.
I think it would be.
You're just gathering information.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm not even thinking about regmen, they'll pop into your head, but it's really just providing all the broad data so that, because if you just wait for people to come into the next meeting, they're gonna come and go, oh, I didn't know we were gonna talk about that, or something will come up, and then where'd we get a delay, so.
I, I think we would be fine because.
Well, I'll volunteer.
Okay, then, I, I can as well, I don't think it would be, from a BOCC standpoint, because either one of us are commissioners, neither one of us are chief deputies, so.
And I would say yes, Mike, but he's studiously not making eye contact.
I'm with Christie, we're trying.
I, I think we've got enough.
All right, that's good, that's my motion.
Second.
She's leaving down your finger.
Got a motion, second? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any of those, I just have it. All right, any more, uh, business on item five? If not, thank you.
So, then.
Mr. Speaker, I'm sorry.
For Chris's information, our next BET is the twelfth, is that right?
It sounds right.
Yes, ma'am.
Tuesday, November the twelfth.
Ten o'clock.
One o'clock.
Uh, yes, this is a special, that's why it's ten.
Okay.
Generally, they're at one.
Tuesday, yeah.
Until next year.
Next year. And we'll be in touch before then, I'm sure.
Tuesday, November the twelfth, at one p.m.
We'll be there.
Thanks, Chris.
Thank you guys so much.
Thank you.
We appreciate you. Okay, um, we've been in here a long time, is there anything on item one about the, the county's plan to build a new jail? I'm sorry, item three?
I just handed this out, I'm still filling in blanks, but just everybody take a look at that, and I'm just trying to have a master list of what all the considerations are, so that we can hand it off whenever we get serious about this.
Well, thank you for putting this together.
Was this attached?
No, it's not.
No, I just.
Without objection, the chair will ask if this document be made part of the record, and then do we need to do the calendar?
It's real brief. Today, item B.
Huh?
You want B? Option B. Okay, so, wait, what are the options? It's only one day. So, it's whether we're meeting November fourth or November tenth. And the only reason why I gave you November fourth or November tenth is because on November tenth, we do have a jail trust meeting at one thirty that day also, so, so is this twenty twenty five?
Yeah, it's Monday before Veterans Day.
And this is twenty twenty five?
Twenty twenty five.
Okay, yeah.
Is there a reason you don't want the four?
For me? It's just personal, I'm just busy, I'll make either one work.
I know that's right in the middle of your tax bill.
Well, I'll, I'll second your B motion.
I knew you'd do it.
Did B a motion?
Which one's the four?
Uh, A.
Option B would be where we meet on November tenth.
November tenth is option B.
Yeah, okay.
I make a motion for option B, I'll second.
And, okay, there's a motion and a second for option B, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. It be declared that B is.
We're going back to.
No, we, we think it's all working pretty good right now. We're gonna go to lunch. Now, this is what I, this is some stuff from a news story that we were looking at last time.
I make a motion, me and Jerry.
Other than I could get rid of it.
Are there any board comments saying none, we've got a motion to get out here, we got a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any of those?
So for our committee, Jason, what I.